We stand in the United States of America and say the republic, we stand as one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
One quick note before I open up for public comment. This is our, I want to say, ex-town manager in the background.
Thank you.
Thanks. So again, this is Todd Cusamano's last, I want to say, official meeting. He still is a town employee. He started with the town on September 1st, 2016. So you made it just about six years. And your first town council meeting was October 4th. I don't know why you missed one somehow, but we just want to appreciate again, Todd, I think it's been said numerous times, everything you've done for the town. It was a great, great job. You had a great run. You did a lot of good for us. So I just, we just want to really appreciate you. And staff I know is working on having some kind of a community event that everybody will be invited to. I don't want to say to say our farewells and goodbyes to Todd because he's just going up and over the hill. So he's a short distance away. But again, thanks. And Amy said I could do this. This is just a little something from all of us to you. Okay, with that, I'm going to go ahead and open up the need for public comment. This gives anyone from the public and operators speak on anything that is not on our agenda tonight. If you're hearing you'd like to speak, please feel free to go to the podium. And if you're online, please raise your hand and Rebecca will be able to bring you over.
Hi, everyone. Whoops.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're limited to three, three minutes.
Oh my, that's going to be hard. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Patsy McCullough. I was born and raised in Corder Madera. I grew my two children here in Corder Madera. And I managed an entire team for Vale Resorts for the Annie Mountain Store for about 28 years here in Corder Madera. So I have pretty deep roots. I'm also the partner and managing partner of Zen's Wine Bar up in Corder Madera at the hub of the downtown area. And what brings me here today is that our ordinance, the pandemic relief ordinance, the temporary ordinance is expiring for our beautiful parquet that the town granted us. And I want to say thank you to the town of Corder Madera because during the crazy pandemic, everybody pivoted a billion times. And we wound up with this great outdoor space. The town jumped to it. We built it accordance to ADA compliance. We've made it beautiful with bougainvillea and wonderful seats. And lo and behold, the city of Corder Madera loves it. The ordinance is running out at the end of December. As of yet, there's not a plan in place to carry this forward past December. And that's what I'm here urging you to do is to do the work with the planning team, whatever it takes. I know there's a lot. I know you're all busy. But it would be a huge shame and a loss to the downtown area if this ordinance went away and restaurants and the other businesses would have to just tear down these outside seating areas in hopes that it might be voted and brought back to permanence later. A couple of things that I want to point out is that we support a lot of nonprofit organizations through free event space at Zen's Wine Bar. Dana Swisher, most notably, awarded a huge award. Her major fundraising event, we worked together in accordance with her and we marketed and we gave the space, we gave a lot of wine, and this brought in a lot of money for her event that she was just awarded for the gardens that just happened. We also support the Spark Group for the Corder Madera School System, SMMC, Twin Cities Co-op, and the list could go on. But not only do people love it, but we've been able to just offer the space as a place for people to gather in a safe means and hold whatever events that they want to have. And we don't charge for that space. Of course, we're grateful for the support. And the business has thrived through this entire time. In fact, people want more. And wouldn't it be amazing if we could turn the entire Old Town Square into something like the Mill Valley Lumber Yard?
Patsy, I'm sorry. It's three minutes.
Okay, so if you can't, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm part of the team.
Thank you.
I'm not sure I can follow that up, actually. That was, she pretty much said everything. I'm Kyle Hendricks. I'm the, the other half of the party there, the owner of Zen's Wine Bar. What we've done in the community is raise, I mean, I hate to use the word, just cliches, awareness. When I bought the bar, I, I think these guys have heard it before. All I wanted was a fun local place where people would come in, have good wine, share their thoughts, have a good time. What it's morphed into is a community hangout, an event. And thousands of people have, have mentioned that they, that they love the place. They love what's going on there. Even during COVID, it was a place for people to come in and just engage in life and forget about the crap going on, pardon the word, but it's true. What we'd like to do, obviously, is, is ask you guys to take a look at the permit that's, that's in place now that will run out, 31st of December. There is a contention that would require it to be torn down while it's, while they're taking a look at the planning of what they want it to look like, conceptualized. Instead of tearing it down and then putting it back together, extend the permit and let us work with the planning commission and try to build it to however, whatever the parameters are going to be. It would just be a shame. A, not only is it a huge part of the volume, and hence tax money for the city, but we would wind up laying off people, which, and we don't want to do that. We've got 15 people we'd have to lay off, probably 10 to 12 of them. I guess that's pretty much it. She's covered everything. We're entrenched in the community. We support the community in every instance. As a matter of fact, we're supporting the music at the end of the summer concert series. There'll be an additional six weeks that we're sponsoring and we're paying for no admission fee. We're just doing it for the community. And that's the kind of stuff that we do. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Kyle.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, town staff. Thank you for allowing us to stand up and do this this evening. My name is Anita Bach. I live on Christmas Tree Hill. And my colleague Brendan Hemley and Cynthia Ann are here with me tonight because we would like to recognize Todd Cusamano. A few weeks ago, the Central Marin NRG group met with him to thank him for what he has done to initiate and sustain the neighborhood response groups. And tonight, this Christmas Tree Hill group specifically would like to recognize him. Without his support and that of Rebecca and Lorena, it simply wouldn't be possible for us to do the work that we do. As you know, the NRGs are a completely volunteer-driven group. And so having financial support from the town, for which we thank you as well, and having some administrative support from time to time, and most importantly, having the moral support of someone like Todd has been absolutely invaluable to sustaining the NRG movement. I know that Councilman Beckman is very familiar with the group. In fact, I think you're a block captain or you're on one of the groups. And so we, we hope, of course, that that relationship will continue with the town and they will continue to have that level of support. We are here to partner with you to ensure the safety of our community. So with that, if I might ask Todd and Cynthia and Brendan to join me up here, so that we can recognize him with a certificate of appreciation, which we've awarded to Todd Cusamano with grateful thanks for your invaluable financial and administrative support without which the CTH NRG would not have flourished and the Central Marin NRG network would not exist. Your commitment to the NRG initiative and to the safety of the residents of Central Marin has been deeply appreciated. You will be missed from the Christmas Tree Hill NRG team. Thank you. He says he's going to miss as little as you know. We'll bother him as much in Mill Valley as we will here. And if I can just say one final thing, I know that no town manager is ever successful without a phenomenal staff. And you have a great staff. The Parks and Rec staff, Rebecca, Lorena, really, you couldn't ask for a wonderful and more supportive group of people. Thank you so much.
Thanks. And thanks for all your work on the NRG up on Christmas Tree Hill. Thanks. I think we have one more speaker. And then we have one person with their hands raised.
Hi, I'm going to make things a little unhappy here, and I apologize for that, but it's necessary. I'm here on an emergency basis. There's a death trap at the end of South Toledo Street. We don't have one emergency evacuation exit. I don't know why the town doesn't know about this. It's one long stretch of road from my house to Tamalpais. There's not one evacuation exit. And the fire gate is locked behind me. Now, it's going to be a replay of the Paradise Fires. Because neighbors trying to make it to safety are going to choke the streets. It'll be bumper to bumper. We'll be sitting there. If somebody forgot the family dog, they're going to go back and get it. The streets are going to be clogged. I'm no stranger to fire. I've been in four fires in two years. Two at my Russian River Home. I was evacuated two times. And two at my home in Orange County. My Corder Madera Home, my neighbor's house burnt down, and the man up the block across from me, he died in a fire. I had a hard time getting the report from the fire department, but he didn't make it out on time. And the only reason his, his wife made it out on time is there was a worker in the neighborhood. The town should have never let the Board of Supervisors develop Alta Bowl and turn it into a vehicle park. They come with contraptions filled with fuel. I don't know if it's gasoline, but they come with motorcycles and go karts and they speed through that section because it can't be monitored. The police talked to me and they are a little fed up with the Board of Supervisors putting a load of responsibility on them when they are short-staffed. But anyway, I can't get out. There's no way. And I invite you all. I hope you will all come. Please, Leila, please, Robert, please, Fred, please, Charlie and Eli, please come and look and bring Brian Washington. Because there's a little history as to how things happened, the way they've happened. And I don't have the time to tell you. But I want to make a few points. I hear people out there all night. The park is never closed. So 24/7, literally, people are one inch from my property. Now, it could be a serial killer. It could be a pyromaniac. And by the way, 30 years ago, there was a huge fire. The fire department has no record of it, but the newspapers do. Okay, so this is a fire area. Two houses have burned down within 10 years. The, the fire department couldn't make it up there in time. They tried, and I'm not blasting the fire department. It's just that that area should not have been developed before emergency evacuations were put in.
You know, I'm sorry, you're limited to three minutes.
I'm sorry. Did I do that?
Yeah, you're a few seconds over, but yeah, thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Hello, Mayor and council people. My name is Brandon Hemley. I live on Christmas Tree Hill. I came here for another reason tonight, to recognize Todd Cusamano. But sometimes life throws you a big softball. And I just wanted to put in the pitch for what Kyle and Patsy are doing at the Zen's Wine Bar. I live literally a block away on Christmas Tree Hill. And it's just, it's just been fantastic what they've done there. I'm not a regular patron, but, but I fully approve of what they're doing. It has become a really vibrant community hotspot. And they sometimes have music. Doesn't bother me at all. I'm right there. It's, it's wonderful. So I figured while I'm here, I would give some words of support for what they're, they're asking. And I think it'd be a great, great benefit for the town. So thank you very much.
Thanks. Appreciate it. We have nobody else in the public here. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Steve Hoffmeyer. I'll touch on the Patsy and Kyle thing too. First of all, they're local. So that's a big deal. I've talked to Todd about, you know, other parklets and stuff. And it's a little bit different situation. So I, I back that. Also, I want to thank Todd. We've been battling for years with the post office. So I just want to say thank you. Super effort. I approached most of you guys at the groundbreaker, the Maylands and the Hoffmeyers. Just want to reiterate that as you guys go for the grading, and I've talked with Alton Construction as well, just want to make sure we don't get missed when they take the 18 inches down at the edge of 152, the yellow house that we own as a city. So on proposing, I emailed Bob and Eli to put some trees there like we did up on Tamalpais. I was part of that project, putting those redwoods in. Because once a big two and a half story building goes up, our properties are going to be impacted. So when we go to do that grading, it's going to go down 18 inches. I just want to make sure that it doesn't come back to the Maylands and the Hoffmeyers. And it's like, oh, wow, we didn't know. So we can do the man's native trees that we put in with all your help. Or, you know, we could do conifers as well. They might be a little big, you know, and a little messy, but just don't want to miss the best on it. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Appreciate it. And then we have one hand raised. If you can bring Rosa over, please.
Okay, she's been given permission to speak. So Rosa, if you could just unmute yourself.
I'm, hello, this is Rosa. I'm sorry. I must have raised my hand by accident, only to say, thank you all for being there. But I did not mean to raise my hand. Thank you.
No problem. Thanks, Rosa. I don't see any other hands raised. Did we get any email public comment in?
We do not have any email public comment.
Thanks. With that, I'll go ahead and close out public comment. We're going to move to presentations. The one presentation we have tonight, I want to say it's one of the bigger ticket items we've had in this town in a while. Caltrans is going to do a presentation. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it's regarding the Highway 101 Tamalpais Drive Overcrossing Project. And you have to excuse me if I still call it an overpass. I think I'm just old school that way. Probably dates me also. The format we're going to use for this is we're going to have Caltrans do their presentation. We're going to have questions from, from the council to Caltrans. We're then going to have staff do their presentation, including introduction of a draft resolution for alternative 4B. Then we're going to have questions from the council to staff. And then we're going to have public comments we'll open. And then we'll bring it back to council for our discussion and a possible motion or action on the, the resolution. So with that, and one other thing which I'm going to turn over to RJ in a minute to make introductions to the Caltrans folks. But one thing to note, and that is Caltrans, again, no offense, they're a different animal. The state animal is just different entity. They're not capturing comments at this meeting for the purpose of their project tonight. Staff is trying to figure out if there's a way that they can just wrap them all up and then send them to Caltrans. But I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of that. So with that, let me go ahead and turn it over to RJ for introductions.
Thank you, America Cissé. And just to clarify, so they're in the stage of a draft environmental document, an initial study and negative declaration. And so for purposes of that comment period, any comments from the public need to go directly to them at the email provided in the staff report on the town's webpage. And we have other areas we can make that available if needed. But thank you tonight. So we have a team from Caltrans, as mentioned by America Cissé. This is a Caltrans-led project. Obviously, it's a project that is here in our community. So it's very important to us. And they're going to lead with their presentation, going with an overview of their alternatives and the environmental document. And then they'll pass it back to staff and, and council, as America Cissé said. So I will introduce Ram, who's the Caltrans PM, and he can introduce the rest of his team. Thank you, Ram.
Thank you, RJ, for the introduction. And good evening, everyone. My name is Ram Bhammavaram. I'm the Regional Project Manager, working with Caltrans District 4. My office mainly works on Marin County projects. And today, we are here to make presentation on Tamalpais Overcrossing Project. Me and my project development team, who, some of them will be presenting along with me, we are very excited about the project. And we do understand based on the workshop we had two weeks back, we do understand the importance of this project to the community. So we look forward to make the presentation. And more importantly, we look forward to receive the feedback and consider it as we move along with the project.
Sorry, Ram. Sorry to interrupt. Can you speak a little bit maybe closer to your microphone so we can hear you a little bit more clearly? You're sounding a little bit distant. Please.
Thank you for the comment. Is it, is it any better now? I'll try to be louder as loud as possible.
Looks like it is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Liz, are you going to share the presentation or you want me to share the presentation?
I'll share the presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Diana. Okay, as I mentioned, we are here to present the project, US 101 Tamalpais Drive Overcrossing Project. And as RJ mentioned, we are in the PAUD stage of the project, which is an environmental and project report stage. So me and my team, we will be presenting the details of the project as well as some of the alternatives we are considering to address the project needs. Next slide, please. So we'll, we'll be briefly going over the history and environmental process of this project. And I will cover the purpose and need as well as scope of the project and the alternatives, multiple alternatives we are considering at this point. And we'll also go over the environmental impact and project schedule. And finally, the project resources we have for this. Next slide, please. I just want to make sure you can hear me clearly.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome.
Yeah, please take over me.
All right. Thanks, Ram. So my name is Liz Nagle. I am the Lead Environmental Planner on this project. And I'm going to touch briefly on the project history, as well as the initial study and negative declaration. The RJ mentioned is the environmental document for this project. Next slide, please. All right. So for the project history, we just want to take a moment here and acknowledge that we understand, you know, that this project has been ongoing for the past 20 years. We know that there is extensive engineering studies as well as planning efforts that have been a part of this project. So we know that the town and the community of Corder Madera have been very invested and involved in this project as it has progressed. And so we want to say at Caltrans that we believe that we're putting forward a project that not only meets the purpose and need of the project, but also considers important design elements such as bicycle, pedestrian, and bus considerations. Next slide, please. All right. So the initial study and negative declaration, or ISND, is the environmental document that we prepared for this project. And we've done so in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA. We will also be preparing a categorical exclusion, or CE, and that will be done in accordance with the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA. So the purpose of the initial study and negative declaration is to assess the potential environmental impacts that the project could have. So you can see here the screen matrix to the right. These are the different environmental resources that are protected under CEQA. So the way that we analyze these at Caltrans is we form what's called a project development team, or PDT. And this is a comprehensive group of experts, including our biologists, our culturalists, water quality specialists, engineers, and other environmental staff. And so what they will do is they will assess potential environmental impacts that could occur from the project. And if they do identify any, they will also include measures to reduce, avoid, or minimize those impacts. So importantly for this project, the Tamalpais Drive Overcrossing Initial Study Negative Declaration did not identify any significant impacts. Next slide, please. All right. And then I'm going to hand it back over to Ram, and he's going to go into more of the project details.
Thank you, Liz. In the next few slides, I'll briefly go over the project description and the main need and purpose of the project, why we started this project, and multiple alternatives that we are considering at this point. Next slide, please. So the main project description is, we propose to upgrade the structure over US 101 at Tamalpais Drive Overcrossing by replacing the existing non-standard pedestrian facilities with ADA compliant features, Americans with Disabilities Act compliant features. And the second component of the project is to improve the seismic structural improvement, intersection modification, reconfiguration of the US 101 on and off ramps, and repairs and maintenance of the existing structure. So as you can see from the description, the project mainly has two components, to upgrade the non-standard pedestrian facilities to ADA compliant, and also to take care of the seismic structural deficiencies. Next slide, please. So that was the project description. But I also would like to go the basic need, why we started the project. As mentioned, the existing pedestrian infrastructure is not compliant with the current state and federal accessible regulations. So that's one basic need. And the other basic need is the structure is at risk of seismic failure because it cannot be fully inspected. So the main purpose of the project is to take care of these two requirements. Next slide, please. So in order to address those two core components of the scope, project development team, as of now, we are considering six build alternatives and one no build alternative. I would like to emphasize that all the six build alternatives does include the scope which would take care of the two deficiencies that mentioned. One is to upgrade the pedestrian facilities to ADA compliant, and other is to make sure that structure is structurally sound. All the six alternatives that we are considering it, they would include the scope that would address those two deficiencies. Next slide, please. Now, I would like to hand over the presentation to our landscape architect, Diana Pink.
Thank you, Ram. As some of you may have seen at our community meeting, in the project, in the public announcements or in the project website, we have created 3D models of the project alternatives that we refer to as the 360 tour. Developed with input from design, project management, and the environmental team, we hope these models can help explain the proposed changes in addition to the maps on the project website. The 360 tour can be accessed through our project website or by utilizing the QR code shown on the screen. When you first get to the 360 tour website, you will see the overcrossing as it exists today, with the view north towards Larkspur. Town Center, Corder Madera sits on the west side of 101, to the left side of your screen, the Village Corder Madera, to the right on the east side of 101. You'll see seven buttons along the top of the screen, one for the existing conditions and one for each of the six alternatives. Inside each alternative, you'll be able to click and drag to look around, and to zoom in and out on particular features. You'll also notice a small button with an eye pop up, which can be clicked to see more information about that alternative. As Ram mentioned, many of the alternatives share the same features, removal of the existing ADA, or excuse me, existing non-ADA compliant pedestrian spiral ramps and staircases, modifications at both the northbound 101 and southbound 101 intersections with Tamalpais Drive. Four of the alternatives will improve the pedestrian and bike connections from the southbound 101 intersection at Tamalpais Drive over to Casa Buena Drive. And both the southbound and northbound bus stops and bus bypass lanes will be altered. And both the southbound and northbound bus stops and bus bypass lanes will be altered. And now I will pass it over to Gulam, who will explain the project alternatives.
Thank you, Diana. Good evening. My name is Gulam Hopal. I'm Caltrans the Secret Chief of Design for Napa and Marin Counties. And I will talk about the six build alternatives that were selected for this project. All of these six alternatives meet the purpose and need of the of the project. I will start with alternative two A. Okay, next slide, alternative two A.
Is it? No, two A?
Two A, yes. Alternative two A, please.
Diana, we are seeing the very first slide. Maybe you need to reopen the presentation. Okay, now we are good.
Okay, this is
Thank you.
Two A. And this alternative, we will be removing the existing non-ED compliance portal walkway ramps. And construct new loop walkway ramps with staircases to connect it to the Tamil Pies Overcrossing. And also on the east side of the project at the intersection of the northbound on ramp and Tamil Pies Drive. We will be realigning the on ramp to create a signalized intersection and a new bypass. So only one lane will be added at this location. And we will be installing class two bike lanes on Tamil Pies Drive. The area which is shown in green colors, we will do that on both sides of the Tamil Pies Drive. Also, a new pedestrian sidewalk would be constructed on southbound off ramp from the intersection to the existing bus stop and also the the existing northbound bus stop will be removed to the new location. In addition to these improvements, all pedestrian and ADA elements within the project limits will be upgraded to current standards and seismically retrofitted, which is very similar in scope for all these six alternatives. The total cost of the project is fourteen around fourteen million dollars. Alternative two B.
I think you're fading somewhat in and out. I don't know if you need to get closer to your microphone. Thanks.
Okay, okay. So alternative two B, this alternative is very similar to our alternative two A. Most of the scope elements are same as two A with the exception of the intersection of northbound on ramp and Tamil Pies Drive on the eastern side of the project. Where instead of one lane, we will be adding two lanes here and we will be signalizing the intersection as it was the case for the two A also. Part of the existing northbound on ramp will be removed. A new bus station will be built on the outside of this northbound on ramp. And the sidewalk for Tamil Pies Drive will be extended to provide connectivity to this new bus stop. This alternative also includes maintaining the existing structure and also seismic retrofitting and upgrading all the existing ADA and pedestrian elements carrying ADA standards. The cost is very similar to the first alternative to alternative two A, which is around fourteen point five million for that. Next alternative, three A. Yeah, alternative three A, there are some changes in this compared to the two previous alternatives. One major change is that we will be widening the existing Tamil Pies Overcrossed Structures by fifteen feet to provide room for bike way and walkway here. And this will be barricaded from the live traffic on the Tamil Pies Drive. So this will be one of the major changes. Like the previous two alternatives, we will be removing the existing non-EDA compliant walkways. And we'll be installing two, we're constructing two new loop walkways, but it will be on the north side of the Tamil Pies Overcrossing here. The work at the intersection on the east side of the project at the intersection of northbound one O one, sorry, northbound on ramp and Tamil Pies Drive will be the same, will be signalized, two lanes will be added, part of the existing on ramp will be removed and a bus, the new bus stop will be provided. And existing northbound bus stop will be removed from the existing location. Also, on the southbound off ramp on the western side of the project, which is towards the left of, the top left of the project, a new bus stop and pullout area will be constructed by widening the outside of the off ramp. And also connectivity to this new bus stop will be provided from all directions. Also, a new pedestrian bike walkway. Pedestrian and bike walkway from Casa Buena Drive will be built and connected to the existing sidewalk on the Tamil Pies Overcrossing. Also on the west side, which is to the left, the top left of the project. So we will create a signalized intersection at the intersection of southbound off ramp and Tamil Pies Drive and we will reconfigure the existing southbound on ramp and bring it to the signalized intersection and removing the existing on ramp, southbound on ramp. And we will be, this will be a full-legged intersection at this point. And as with other alternatives, you know, the existing bus stops on the southbound direction as well as northbound direction, as I mentioned before, will also be removed as well as the bus bypasses. And one other major difference for three A is that the southbound loop ramp on the top left corner of the project will also be removed completely. Alternative three B. This alternative is very similar to alternative three A. There's only one difference here that instead of two separate eastern and western new walkways, we will be building one big walkway that will connect the eastern side of Tamil Pies Overcrossing to the western side. And it will cross the freeway here. So instead of two walkways, there will be only one walkway here. The rest of the scope elements will be the same. Alternative three A and three B will also include maintaining of the current structure and also retrofitting of the Tamil Pies Overcrossing, which is very similar for all alternatives. Four A. Yeah, this alternative has very similar scope elements like the three As and three Bs. Except that the new walkways, pedestrian walkways will be built on the north side of the of the project. There will be two separate walkways. Unlike three A and three B, the Tamil Pies Overcrossing will be widened to provide room for bike lane and also walkway, which will be barricaded from the live traffic on Tamil Pies Drive. And intersection modification on both sides, on the eastern corner of Tamil Pies Drive and western side of the Tamil Pies Drive will be the same as well as the the extension of the pedestrian and bikeways from Casa Buena to Tamil Pies Overcrossing. So they will all be the same as three A and three B. In this alternative, we will be removing both of the loop ramps which on for on the for the southbound direction and also for the northbound direction. We will be removing those loop ramps completely. And like the previous alternatives, we will be removing the bus stops and bus bypasses for both south and north direction also. And on the south side of Tamil Pies Drive, a sidewalk will be provided, but the bike lane will be shared with the with the with the traffic with here. So this will be a class three bike lane for alternative four A. As I also have to say that for three A and three B, that is also a class three bike lane on the southern or in other words, for the eastbound direction on Tamil Pies Overcrossing. So that is one of the suggestions here. Alternative four B. Yeah, this alternative is very similar to four A. The structure widening to accommodate for separate bike way and pedestrian walkway will be done. The only difference with the alternative four is that here we will only be removing part of the loop on ramps for both northbound and southbound direction. And the loop ramps will be reconfigured. I will be brought closer to the intersection on the eastern side and western side intersection here. That's the only difference. The remaining scope elements will be the same as four B. And in this alternative, like the rest of the alternatives, all existing pedestrian facilities will be brought to current ADA standards. And the structures will be maintained and seismically retrofit, which is very similar in scope like the rest of the alternatives. So I now go back to Liz to discuss the next topic on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Gulam. So I'm going to briefly touch on environmental impacts by alternative as well as go over project schedule and resources that we have. Next slide, please. All right. So for environmental impacts by alternative, I want to note that the project area is a highly disturbed area. It's been developed throughout the years. You know, it is a major freeway interchange. So while there are different types of habitat that do exist, they are fairly limited. So here you can see there's a couple that are highlighted that have different impacts by alternative. We have aquatic features and trees. And I just want to note that these are preliminary numbers. We will further refine and determine those numbers with appropriate resource agency in the next phase of the project. Next slide, please. All right. So for our schedule, we already wrapped our environmental studies. We published our draft environmental document on June thirtieth of this year. And then we started our public review period on July seventh. It's ending next Monday on August twenty second. And as a reminder, we are not capturing any comments during this meeting. All comments should be put in writing and addressed to myself or submitted through our project website or mailed. And then we hosted our community workshop at Caltrans on August fourth, a couple of weeks ago. And then tonight is the town council meeting. And then on December thirtieth of this year, we are going to be releasing our final environmental document. That final environmental document will include the selected preferred alternative as well as an analysis of how we reached that conclusion. And then after that, we will work on obtaining necessary permits for the project that will lead up to the final design. Complete design is targeted for April thirtieth of two thousand and twenty four and then construction is slated to begin in two thousand and twenty five. And these dates are pending, and that is if we secure funding for the project. Next slide, please. And then here we have the resources available for the project. You can find the draft environmental document on our Caltrans website as well as that three sixty tour that Diana shared earlier. And then the comments, you can submit them to the Tamil Pies Drive Overcrossing email that you see at the bottom of the screen, or they can be directed to myself. I believe that RJ said it was in the agenda. So that is what we have for you. Thanks so much. Let's go to the next slide and we'll get into our comments and question session.
Thanks, Liz. Are there any questions from town council members? And if I have this correct, you want all questions routed through you correctly, Liz, and then you'll triage them out?
Correct.
Thanks. Are there any questions? Yeah, Eli, go ahead.
Thank you for these are just two very initial questions. So first, we saw at the end there on the environmental impacts, obviously, trees will be impacted. Will they be replaced as part of this project?
Yes. So it is a standard practice that at Caltrans for any impacts that we have for trees, we replace them and we determine that replacement ratio during the design phase when we get our permits with the appropriate resource agency.
Great, thank you. My only other question for now is, will you post video of the August fourth community workshop for those who are not able to attend?
Yes, that is currently in the works.
Great, thank you. I'll save all my other questions for after we hear from staff.
Okay, thanks, Charles. Anyone?
Yeah, I have a lot, but I didn't. Are we also hearing from staff and then?
We're right now, we're just doing questions for Caltrans and then we'll go to staff.
Ask questions to them. So I have a bunch. Has removing the bus stop with stakeholder with all stakeholders involved? So Marin Transit and Golden Gate been discussed with them? And then also is that their preferred alternative? And are they upgrading the rest of the overpasses on one O one in Southern Marin to that new type of bus solution? Number two, have you discussed this with the Transportation Authority Marin Board and and staff? And have they shared any feedback and have been engaged in the process? Number three, is there any landscaping and flood control changes? Will you be required to have native species planting? What is the ecotope that you would basically plant to? You know, are the pines and the redwoods actually appropriate for that wetland? And then, you know, we've removed, we've requested a lot of sick trees and dying trees be removed in that area. So I would just want that to be considered. Will it be? Number four, are, do you plan on making any lighting upgrades to the under part of that pass and along the paths? Is there a public art component? Will there be pedestrian soundproofing or screening to reduce and mitigate the effects of the traffic? Also, is there any standard on the loop ramps as far as their their design as far as speed and also slope? Because the northbound one, when going nor getting on to northbound engages my my braking system. The northbound one, when going north, getting on to northbound engages my my braking system every time I go down it because it's too acute. There's a drop off. So I feel like it's a it's actually a safety hazard in its current configuration and I don't know, I haven't heard. Some of them, it remains, but that's, you know, four B ultimately, I think, would resolve that problem by by flattening it out. So. Are there considerations for age friendly, safer and smoother driving conditions in communities that have older drivers and. Buses and and that type of thing using it? Those are all my questions. So. I can always repeat them or, you know.
Liz, you want to try to tackle those?
You know, I think I could do a couple of them regarding the bus stop. I know that at the. Meeting that we hosted, the community workshop, we did hear from GG NRA and they expressed some dissatisfaction and. The removal and relocation of their bus stop. So I think we at Caltrans will be working on. Setting up a meeting with them to discuss moving forward with the project, you know, how our design can incorporate their concerns. And then you had a question, your second question regarding Transportation Authority Marin. Not sure if it's been, we've been working with Bill Whitney from Transportation Authority Marin. He's been involved. With some of the ongoing meetings that we've had, so they should be aware of the project and how it's been progressing. You talked about native species planting. From what I know about this interchange is that it is landscaped by Caltrans and so I know that there are redwood species and oak species. So. When we replant it, I imagine it would be along the same lines because it is classified as a landscape. Quarter at Caltrans. And then lighting upgrades, I cannot speak to that, but maybe we could have our design speak to that in the moment. Public art component, that would be discussed in our design phase for the project and I believe, you know, the committee would be involved in that. But maybe we can also have some of the Caltrans team chime in on that after I answer the rest of these questions. And then soundproofing, that's going to need to be designed to speak to that. As well as the loop ramp speed regarding slope and being a safety hazard.
Great. That's all of them. Thanks.
Liz, I have a quick question for you. On some of these, it seems like we're getting now into like the roots of this, the details. Are those details going to, as we go along with this between now and, let's say, December, will we have a chance to voice in on some of these details?
Well, I mean, so most of the details will come in the design phase. You know, when what will change now between the draft environmental document and the final environmental document is we will select an alternative. But as far as like details, those will be more in the design phase.
But that's, I'm sorry, that's something that we would have a chance to comment on or provide input on?
I want to say yes. So I mean, we're working closely, you know, with RJ. So as long as he's a part of. You know, our ongoing meetings, like, yes, he's going to represent, you know, the town. As far as like public involvement formally during the design phase. I'm. I don't think that there is a public, like a formal public. Component to it, but you know, if the need is voiced, that the town and the community would like to have, you know. Inclusion of community workshops during the design phase, then I'm sure that we could include that in our process.
Okay, I think that'd be great. Thanks. Leva?
Thanks. I just had a couple. Thanks for your presentation. One question I had, I know our staff is looking at, you know, possibly. Going for a different alternative, but given the funding shortfall, we'd be asking for a delay. I wonder if you can just talk about the effect. Of that delay on your timeline. You know, if funding is secured for an alternative. And then we come back to Caltrans and say, okay, we're ready. We want to do this different alternative. Does your timeline just kick in at that point? Or do we get pushed, you know, further back because we've sort of missed some window or something like that? And then the other question I just had was about the seismic failure. And just how big of a risk if we know that we're looking at for, you know, especially if we were to delay the project? Thank you. Oh, sorry, one more. I just wanted to clarify that all of the alternatives keep a bus stop. Right? Like they're just moving them. We're not getting rid of bus stops. And those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay, so for the funding question, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to our project manager, Ram.
Sure, Liz. Thank you. Thank you for the question. Before going into the funding, I just would like to address the other part about the seismic risk. I just want to clarify that, like. The present condition is that, as I mentioned in the presentation. The structure is at seismic failure because it cannot be fully inspected. So, I mean, we can get back on the actual status of the seismic risk. But I think. There is no known risk as of now. It is just that it cannot be fully inspected, which is not as of Caltrans standard. So we would like to bring it to a stage where Caltrans can fully inspect it and make sure that it is seismically sound. And on the funding question, the standard practice that we have at Caltrans is like. Once we know that the current programmed amount is not sufficient for the selected alternatives. We have a standard process where we go to a project change committee. And propose the change, including the cost increase. And at that point, whether the committee approves the proposed change, it depends on multiple factors. One factor being the merit of the change that we are proposing, the need for the change. And the other other factor, other important factor being the availability of the funding itself. So, I mean, as it's obvious, like we have limited dollars and many of the projects do compete for these dollars. So. At the time when we go for this additional funding, it also depends on what are the other projects that are competing for this funding. And the other risk we have is. If you are not able to secure the funding. And if you don't want to go with the alternatives that we have currently funding for. Then at that point. At that point, like we may need to stop the project for the time being and stopping that means. We may be at the risk of losing the current funding that we have at Caltrans. Which is 16 million for the construction capital. And a total of close to 28 million for the total, including the support project. So once we lose that, once we stop the project and lose the current funding. Then we need to get enter into a next shop cycle. And try to get the funding during the next shop cycle. So if it goes to that stage, we are thinking about several years of delay. And there is always an uncertainty that it may not be selected if a higher funding is required.
Any other questions, Leva?
No, but sorry, I didn't hear. I might have missed it about the bus stops. They're not being removed under any of these, right? It's just they're just being relocated. Is that correct?
Oh, sorry, like I would like to defer that to my design teammate. Goulam, do you know if you can answer the question?
Sorry, yeah. I want all the questions, if you can repeat that.
I think the question is about the bus.
Just wanted to confirm that the, under all of the alternatives, there the bus stops remain, they're just moved to different locations. There's no. Suggestion that we would get rid of the bus stops entirely. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. Either we relocate the bus stops. Or the existing bus stop will remain. As an example. There are two bus stops on the for the westbound and eastbound directions on Tabel Pius over crossing. Will remain in its current position, location. So that will not move for all of these alternatives. But only the southbound and northbound. Bus stops. Will be relocated to new locations. So there will be no. You know, elimination of any bus stops. Either they will be kept in the same location or will be removed to a new location.
Thank you.
Bob, did you have any questions? I just have a couple. If we, and again, I just look at worst case, it's in my nature. If we say go to with four B and we find that there's a funding shortfall, say in November or December, we don't have, we can't make that gap up. Do you guys go to another alternative like a two A or one of those or three B or one of those? Or does a project get stopped? What happens with that?
I think that is that is the process that we go through in the next four months until the end of this phase. So we would like to take the feedback that we get from community into consideration while making the decision. So depending on the feedback we are receiving from community, we need to make a decision whether to. Start continue, whether to continue looking for this additional funding or whether to. Go for the alternatives which we currently have the funding. So that is the decision that to be made once we take into consideration of all the feedback we are getting now.
Okay, and that decision have to be have to be made by December of this year?
That decision has to be made by the end of this phase. So the current, as per the current schedule, end of this phase is the December. But if we know that there is a process that's in place and we might need just a few more weeks of time to make a resolution. I think it can be continued for a few more weeks.
Okay.
To make the decision.
And if we extended it a few more weeks, is that still the other dates on here? Are those pretty much on target then?
The key date here is the end of the design, which is April 2024. In in Caltrans, we go by fiscal year cycles. So this project is scheduled to complete the design by. End of fiscal year 2324. So we target not to skip that fiscal year when it comes to completing the design. That means as you see, as you see from here, we have a two month flexibility. So if I want to take a guess, if it is, say, let a matter of one, two, three months of delay to make this decision. I think that is something we can accommodate in the project schedule. But if it is delaying like more than a year or something like that. At that point, we we are risking the we are risking the project itself. We are risking the losing of the funding of the project itself.
Okay, thanks. So it sounds like we have some wiggle room in there then. Okay, thanks. Are there any?
Few weeks, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
So I had to follow up on one of the design questions about the the. So ultimately, the relocation of the buses, is that a Caltrans design decision or preferred alternative because of the safety aspect? Because of the relationship to the new location of the pedestrian pass in the ADA? Or is it working with the local authority like RJ and the. Shopping centers and other residential groups that might give feedback? So, you know, I just, I wonder why. Caltrans in general, why we would want to take the transit buses off the main freeway? And basically bring them in and mix with the off route traffic of, you know, traditionally smaller cars and. You know, people like that. I mean. Can you explain that a little bit, why that's happening in these proposals so that I get a better understanding of it?
I think you're on mute.
Sorry, Goulam, do you want to speak to that question?
Yes. It has been Caltrans policy for a while. Especially along Marin 101, we have most bus stops are very close to the highway. And also with that bypass to move them away from the highway. And make it more accessible to the locals or in other words. Move these bus stops to locations where it would be more accessible by the general public. So that is, we have been doing for some, a lot of projects that I've been involved with. So I would say that anytime we have, we get an opportunity. That we have a project and we see a bus station. Very close to the highway, we just move it to a new location away from the highway. To the freeway to make it more accessible to the local population.
Any other question? Thanks. Any other question from council members? Okay, so again, the format we're going to do is we're going to turn it over to RJ right now for the staff presentation. And then we'll open it up from from questions from council to you and then we'll open up to public comment. And I appreciate you guys from Caltrans. You can just stay on in case we get questions from the public or if there's any additional questions from the council members. And I appreciate it. And again, appreciate the presentation. Great job. And I'll turn it over to RJ.
All right. Thank you, Merrick Cissé. Thanks, Caltrans, for the presentation. So this is, in staff's view, potentially a 75 year infrastructure project. So it's, this is our chance to get this right. We've had a chance to look at the various alternatives and we've spoken to many community members. We've. Had two BPAC meetings, there's our bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. We've attended the public workshop with Caltrans. We were there to hear the feedback. We've received. Fifty plus emails. We've had additional meetings, so tons of feedback and all of that feedback has really helped us derive some criteria. And I'm going to just paraphrase it from the resolution, just kind of to support where I think. Where I think the town and community wants to go with this is, so. Does the, you know, which of the alternatives satisfies the project purpose and need? So really, it's addressing the ADA compliance and seismic component. Which of the projects satisfies the town's complete streets policy, which is creating and maintaining. A safe, comfortable and convenient travel along and across streets, roads, et cetera. Through a comprehensive, integrated transportation network that serves all categories of uses, including pedestrians, bicyclists, persons with disabilities, motorists. movers of commercial good, so on and so forth. Seniors, children, youth and families. Which of them includes a separated multi-use path that is appropriate for bicyclists and pedestrians of a wide range of ages and experience levels? That was one of the most. Comment, one of the comments we heard in the highest abundance. Which of the alternatives closes a gap between our western and eastern parts of Towne Corner Madera. That has been bisected by Highway 101. Eliminates all existing uncontrolled turning movements by realigning them to standard intersections. Increasing safety for all users. Provides safer access to transit stops. Does not significantly increase vehicle delay, queuing and congestion by vehicles entering the freeway, and I'll get to that later. Reduces our community's overall carbon footprint and reductions of greenhouse gases by promoting alternative non-motor modes of transit and does not significantly increase. Vehicle idling caused by traffic delays. And so when we look at. The first set. From staff and the community, there was a lot of feedback that two A and two B were kind of just the minimal approach, right? There's no. Significantly improved bike ped facility. And then we got into looking at. Three A, three B, four A, four B. And I think there's enough conversation there from a bike ped standpoint to kind of look at them all. But we then, the town hired Precy Transportation to look at from a traffic operation standpoint to see what the delay would be. To vehicle and and motorists. And I'm not going to dive into this in detail. We can make this publicly available. This is a matrix that they. Used or created, but it's based on Caltrans data. So they use the Caltrans traffic reports, Caltrans environmental document, and we're able to extract this information. Oh, sorry. Yeah, thank you. Let me get the screen share here. And so for anyone who wants to see this closer, it was part of our BPAC meeting on on the 8th of this month. And that is recorded and available publicly. But you'll see, depending on several of these scenarios and some of the more egregious ones. Here, for instance, for A, we saw 292 second delay. For the northbound ramp in the afternoon. So that's, that's a lot of time, you know, that's potentially upwards of three cycles of waiting for the light. That's, that's a lot of time. What we found was four B, which had a lot of the bicycle and pedestrian improvements. Had very minimal traffic delays and so. And then let me get back to here. Here's what. That for a PM. Cue looks like here at the bottom of the. that four A PM queue looks like here at the bottom of the screen. Hopefully everyone can see this. So you would have a kind of average queue here, um, in the black and then at your peak, it would expand, um, further back, you know, potentially all the way to Madera, just for that.
I'm sorry, this is during a normal day, right? So this one includes like holidays or anything like that. This is just a normal regular day.
That's correct. So, once we saw this as analysis, um, you know, obviously it was a, a pretty uh, big concern for us. And, um, I think that helps staff, um, really shift toward four B as really the optimum solution here. And that really takes into account all of the criteria that I started my presentation with. And also use this as, um, justification to really, um, not recommend three A, three B or four A because of the adverse traffic delays. And with that, this, um, all of these items, along with a request for a possible um, extension of timing are in the resolution to Caltrans. Um, you know, we've only been at this process, um, publicly since July seventh. Um, you know, I know they're, they have a deadline for this phase of the project of the end of the year. Um, in projects this magnitude, that's a really condensed period. And I think it would be, you know, uh, unfortunate for everyone, Caltrans and the town to, um, discard the merits of an alternative such as four B because the funds can't be found or they can't get them from their sources quickly enough prior to their, their internal deadline. So should that be the issue, the time component, we would want them to consider extending it to allow for additional time for funding, um, obtaining additional funds. And with that, I will turn it back to council.
Are there any questions from council members to RJ?
All right, RJ. So, um, the, uh, Caltrans team had mentioned that during the design phase, you would be the touch point for the town. So I'm going to ask you, do you feel that the town has a good working relationship with this Caltrans team? Do you feel like they would have town inclusion and voice? And, uh, have you felt like that's been happening currently? And in the future, do you think you would be heard, um, within the process that they've currently delineated?
You know, we have, um, been working collaboratively and it's been a good partnership through the last couple of months, definitely. Um, and so I hope that all continues and I hope that all of the feedback that they're hearing tonight and they heard at the workshop and they're going to continue to hear, um, actually moves the needle on the project. But I guess until we see where the alternatives, um, go, it's hard to say exactly how much is hurting.
I would just add, yeah, I, you know, we have, um, started the conversations. I think there has been a, a good discussion about, obviously, where this goes from here. Um, meetings are at a staff level already scheduled to continue the discussion, um, later this month. Uh, beyond the, the, the sort of the August twenty-second deadline for this environmental comment period. I was happy to hear this evening that, um, there is an opportunity to also comment on the design phase of the work because we've heard public comment as well about, can we mix and match some of these options? You know, let's see some of the details about, um, these reconfiguration of the roadways, dimensions, things we haven't really, uh, seen to this point. And so I think, um, you know, it's, it's off to a good start and I think they're here, uh, with their third presentation, uh, this, I think in the last few weeks. Um, and so, um, you know, I think that's, that's the goal. And, and I think we're so thus far, we've, we, we felt like, you know, the comments and I think, uh, have been heard by Caltrans. And I think the stronger the voice we can come at with a preferred alternative and our comments, um, here, the, the, the greater, uh, position we'll be in with those conversations moving forward.
Awesome. Great to hear. Thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, Leela, go ahead.
Thanks, RJ. I just had a quick question about sort of funding and trying to get new funding. So if I'm understanding this correctly, if we were to pursue an alternative, um, and try to get funding for that, we need to do that by December, by the end of December, or else we're, we lose the funding that they already have for two, two A, I think is the, the preferred one at this point from Caltrans perspective. Um, and I'm just trying to understand, it sounds like it's pretty unlikely that we would secure funding for four A within, what is that, in five months? Um, so what happens if we lose that Caltrans funding? And then hopefully we later, can we get it back? I mean, I wonder if you can just talk a little bit about how you envision that process.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's no black and white answer at this point. You know, we're all trying to, um, do what's best to get Corder Madera, the, the best project, which we believe is, is one that includes the multi-use path and also doesn't impact vehicle delays, which is four B. Um, we know the gap is roughly nine million or so. Um, you know, for the reasons we've outlined in the criteria, along with, um, when we talk about town complete streets policy, you know, Caltrans has one of their own and it's very similar. So we think this should be, you know, aside from town feedback, we think that they should be arriving at four B on their own as well and should be motivated to find the additional funds. Um, you know, I think, as Adam mentioned, we're going to have a discussion about funding, um, at the end of the month. And, and, you know, we're going to look at all avenues. We're going to look at grants. We're going to look at other things, but we're definitely going to look to Caltrans to come with more money to build the project that our community thinks is the appropriate project. Um, but I just don't want time to be the reason to hold it up because that's a lot of money to find in short period. It is possible, but, um, to give us flexibility via resolution and to make that a recommendation to Caltrans that, you know, what is extending the project six or twelve months, a phase of the project? We've seen it before, um, in, in, in federal, on Caltrans products before. And so I don't know what the hard deadline is. Maybe there is one, but, um, we definitely don't want to give up just because we couldn't find it by the end of the year. It's just a short amount of time.
Any other questions? Just leverage off Leela's question. So worst case is funding wise, um, it sounds like we just have, the whole thing, we just have to get moved back theoretically. The whole project, if we couldn't come up with the funding and we need more time to find funding.
Yeah, unless they can make up the time through other phases. We would ask that this current phase, the project approval and our own document phase does not have a hard deadline of the end of the year. Right? If, unless we have the money, in which case they can move it forward as fast as they, they like.
Right. So would that move the whole thing back from two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six or twenty?
I think what I heard from them earlier and kind of my sense is that, you know, it's a couple of months, they might be able to absorb that and stay on track. Um, but yeah, I think once you push six, twelve years, then likely the whole thing starts to shift.
Okay.
And just, just the worst case scenario, if you want to go that direction, at some point, there may be a, you may find, if there isn't funding available, we'll come back and we'll have to decide whether two A, two B, the funded project that is out there, um, potentially, we'll see how far we can get beyond the sixteen million. But there may be a, a different discussion at that time that we'll bring back to, obviously to council and discuss, um, where we want to go from then.
And the town is not in a position, at least at this point, I'm again, I just believe in transparency and getting out there. Is not in a position at this point, at part time, probably in the future, to fill that gap, right? The whole nine million.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and just two other quick questions. Do you know if Central Marin Fire or Central Marin Police have been involved in this discussion at all? To find out from them, to get input from them, as far as, I want to say response times, service calls going east to west or vice versa. Seems like they go probably more east to west than vice versa. I just want to make sure that under these alternatives, I know that traffic studies have been done. But is there anything that would affect their service calls?
Right. Um, it's a very good point and, and I think we all know what their answer would be. Um, I, I haven't formally, um, directly reached out to them. Perhaps they've been falling on the periphery. But, you know, that's, that's a lot of time, um, for some of those other alternatives to, to slow things down. So
Okay.
I'm sure they would not be in favor of those for the same reasons.
Okay. Um, if you can't just reach out to them, just again, um, more background. And then the same thing, was there any, um, outreach to either the village or town center? Um, those two entities, again, just to get input, because the way I look at it, I think it's great. We're getting community input from residents, but we have other stakeholders also. And I'm just curious if there was any outreach to them.
Yeah, I spoke to both, uh, Stan Hoffman at the Village and Monte Stevens at Town Center about this. Made sure they are aware of the, um, public workshops and comments and sort of described the projects to them. They, um, you know, obviously, one thing to consider is the, the construction impacts, I think, most, most significantly for them. Obviously, they'd like to see improved, some of the bus transit options may be a benefit to the village because it brings them closer to, and employees closer to actually places of employment. Obviously, the, the linkage between, um, east and west sides of the highway uh, would be greatly appreciated and, and, uh, would, would obviously be beneficial to both centers, but, um, made them aware, they haven't provided any specific written comments, but I'll reach out to them again and see if they want to put anything in the record.
Okay. And just when we're out of curiosity, which I just thought, Marin Luxury, um, Casablanca on that side. And then also the hotel that's going up there also, if you can just kind of reach out to them and just kind of get some input from them, it'd be appreciated. And with that, are there any more comments or I'm sorry, questions regarding to staff? Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. I have one hand raised. If anybody in person wants to speak, please, um, go to the podium. We have two hands raised, three hands raised. You can just go to the podium. I have three hands raised and four hands raised.
Um, Mayor Casissa, um, are we still doing three minutes?
Um, I was trying to see how many hands are raised. We'll go ahead and allow three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, why don't we start in person first? Go ahead. And again, you're limited to three minutes. Appreciate it. Good thing Todd's here.
My three minutes are running out, I hope. Um, Mayor and council members, thank you. I'm Craig Hartman, uh, thirty-year, um, resident, uh, of, uh, East Corbidera. Uh, raised our chi, our kids here, love the schools, love the neighborhood. Um, almost decades, also, I've been a partner in charge of design for architecture and city, city design for Skim, Moise and Merrill, uh, West Coast practice and around the world. So, um, five years ago, I, uh, became increasingly distressed about trying to bicycle and walk across our, our bridge and, and, uh, developed design proposal brought to Caltrans and to, uh, to town council and here we are this evening. I want to thank, uh, first of all, uh, Caltrans for being so, um, diligent in, uh, in really looking at these alternatives, bringing forward, thanks, some really viable ideas. I want to thank certainly the town, uh, the town council, uh, council member Ravasio, uh, RJ and others for, uh, their work with BPAC and so forth, really looking at these alternatives. I think there's consensus around a scheme four, uh, there's a difference between scheme four A and four B. Um, uh, and I, both of them bring significant benefits to our community. I would say that four B, um, or four A, I would say, um, it's probably more seamless in the way it brings together uh, rapid transit bus, uh, local buses, uh, pedestrian mobility, bicycle mobility and, and vehicles, uh, with noting, of course, uh, the comments about, um, congestion. Uh, four B, uh, has some issues that would need to be worked out, I, I would suggest. And I would, uh, we, we would like to, um, encourage, uh, the council to, and the town to really, uh, think seriously about putting together maybe a small design team that would be able to work with Caltrans. I find them to be very, uh, amenable to input. And we're a short period of time, but I think significant, um, progress could be made in creating a synthesis, uh, that would look at the benefits for A and four B, bring them together to really create the best thing. Uh, we have a, as RJ said in the beginning, uh, the seventy-five years, where we have a multi-generation opportunity here in this, in this town to make a difference. Uh, difference will outlive all of us, uh, and that we'll, uh, see all kinds of new forms of transportation. But electrification, it won't be cars idling and screwing gases, electrification coming now, uh, HOV, uh, will change as we have, um, autopilot cars, more and more different kinds of mobility happening. I'd only want to really encourage us to think about the civic implications of this and really look at this holistically. Uh, bring forward to Caltrans, um, ideas that would, um, really be seamless in terms of the way we think about this place. And think about it as a civic opportunity, not just adding some lanes here and there, but really making a civic contribution to this, to this place. I think a bold vision will make a difference with Caltrans leadership, with our own, uh, county, uh, leadership, uh, certainly with this town. And I'd encourage the, uh, you to think about assembling some kind of a team to work with, uh, Caltrans to really, uh, bring this forward in the best way possible. Oh, I don't, with your permission, Mayor, I'd also like to just submit for the record, um, uh, just a, a statement of goals that you might want to think about as well as, um, this early study that, um, I think has a lot to, to think about.
Okay, thanks. That'd be great. Thank you. Anybody else in person wishes to speak? Go ahead.
Um, my name is Wendy Wallish. I live on the west side of Corder Madera. I just have one question, the plans where they would move the bus stops, where would they move them to?
Thanks. We're gonna, we'll do, every, we'll open up public comment and then we'll take all the questions and answer them all at once when, when I close public comment. Anybody else in person? No? Okay. Um, if we can go ahead and bring over, um, hopefully I say your name correct. Yammal?
Carol.
Carol, thank you. And again, you have three minutes. And then after that, it'll be, um, Patty and then David.
Good evening, council. I'm Carol Kellaway, the executive director for Marin County Bicycle Coalition. Uh, we work to bring about a Marin where people of all ages and abilities can ride for everyday transportation and recreation. Uh, thank you to the town and all of the community members who have said that a safe and separated bikeway is of the utmost importance for this project. At this point, we've had over a hundred people write to Caltrans in favor of alternative B. I want to stress what an exciting and important opportunity this is for the town of Corder Madera. Alternative four B would create a facility that a true majority of the ten thousand residents of Corder Madera could use, rather than the few percent who feel comfortable riding across the interchange today. We commend Caltrans's recommendation that we pause the project while we look for grants to make up the funding shortfall to build this project right. When TAM surveyed members of the public several years ago, a majority of car commuters said that they would like to ride more for commutes and errands. The reason the majority of the people do not do this is that did, they do not feel safe today and freeway interchanges are the most harrowing places of all to ride. Our world is changing and we need to change our infrastructure to accommodate modes with less impact to air quality, to greenhouse gas emissions and to safety. There will be trade-offs and I encourage you to keep an open mind about what the future will look like if we give people a safe place to walk and bike. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate the comments. If you can bring over Patty and then we have David.
Thank you. Um, I did send my comments in already to Caltrans about what I call the Pat Ravasio, um, design, which I think would be wonderful. Uh, my questions are, do all of the options allow people to walk back and forth between town center and the village? Um, what is the, uh, anticipated lifespan for this new over crossing? Because let's not do it hurriedly and, um, do it wrong for the next however many decades. So that is one of my considerations. I wondered if there's any design that has a separation between the bikes and the pedestrians. And, um, I'm a little concerned that there was going to be no further public input in the design phase. And, um, I just know that, uh, we've been seeing headlines about how many extra millions or billions of dollars there are in California's pockets. And it seems that the money could be found so that Caltrans could do it correctly. So that's my hope. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty. And again, staff is diligently writing the questions down. We'll ask them at the end of public comment. Uh, if you can bring it over David and then Robert.
Good evening, everybody. I'd, um, like to really applaud Caltrans, particularly on the fairly recent new director's policy on complete streets. Uh, it really, in my view, represents a very robust approach to requiring that all transportation projects that are funded and overseen by Caltrans are mandated to provide comfortable, convenient and connected facilities for, uh, people in Corder Madera who are walking, taking transit or on bikes. Uh, I also noted on I also noted on Caltrans's website that in addition to facilitate and implement that robust complete streets policy, Caltrans has manual changes that require staff to go through a very articulated process where the complete streets decisions are outlined and make it transparent that the policy has been followed. With that in mind, it seems to me that alternatives to A and to B cannot meet the policy and directives of the new director's policy on complete streets. I would encourage staff that's on this call now, and of course, I'll put these comments in in writing. But I would encourage them to go to their experts on the complete streets directive at Caltrans and simply ask the question, would two A and two B meet the mandated requirements of Caltrans own complete streets policy? I don't believe that it they will, and therefore, two A and two B should probably just simply be taken off the table, which would then allow Caltrans to think a little bit more globally about the funding since the money that's been allocated would not meet its own internal policy and directives. Thank you very much.
Thanks, David. If you can bring over Robert and then we have Roy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, Robert Betts, Director of Operations and Planning, Marin Transit. I'm here tonight to comment and highlight the importance of this project and its impact on local transit services. And I do thank the council for asking questions about the bus stop because it is highly relevant to these designs tonight. It's important to note that all the alternatives propose a significant propose significant changes to the bus stops, which directly impact both bus operations and pedestrian circulation in the study area. To offer a bit of context on the current transit services in the area, the three bus stops that are within this Caltrans study area are served by five local Marin transit routes and three regional Golden Gate Transit routes. On the local service alone, over a hundred and seventy five daily bus trips serve these three stops and over two hundred and fifty daily passengers get on and off at these stops. These are both the highest ridership stops and the most frequently served stops in your community. It's also worth mentioning that current daily ridership on these routes that serve these stops is higher than pre-COVID levels. Unlike many of the users of this over crossing, such as those that that work at the village or town center or students, these bus riders often do not have other mobility options and flexibility with their commute patterns. Compared to the greater Marin, our rider demographics represent a higher percent of youth, senior and low wage earners who do not often have time to spend at evenings and comment on public projects. I hope my comments are heard and considered as you develop a preferred alternative and as Caltrans revises these for final design. The relocated freeway bus pads offer welcomed enhancements for pedestrian access and safety, but will also impact transit operations, runtimes and delay. Marin Transit supports these freeway bus stop relocations only if delays are minimized and preferential treatment for transit are included. Based on the information currently available, it is unclear that the added delay will what the added delay will be on transit and our riders. Three of the four alternatives and all the alternatives that appear to have the most support from the public and the city do eliminate a much needed local bus stop on the Tamalpais over crossing in favor of the dedicated multi-use path. There is no proposal to replace these bus stops in this alternative. I want to note that this is different than what we heard from Caltrans, and I would ask that maybe in the follow-up portion, they identify where that overpass bus stop gets relocated. I appreciate the town hearing our concerns and taking these into consideration when providing feedback to Caltrans. Complete Streets and Climate Action Goals are great policies to adopt, but actions that specifically impact transit and restrict our ability to serve your community will work to counter and support these efforts. Thank you.
Thanks. If you can bring it over, Roy, please.
Good evening. I agree with Robert Betts, and the one thing that the plans show on the transit pads on on one oh one, they're removing them. They didn't say where they're relocating them. And it's a pretty good bet that Golden Gate Transit will not take their express buses off of the freeway. Would like to know about what's happening with the traffic signals. So we're going to be going from like a two-way traffic signal to a three or four or five-way traffic signal on either side of the overpass. So that's going to add a lot of delays to your study. It's not clear on what's going to happen with the maintenance of the traffic signal sequencing. Because I've come home at night at eleven o'clock in the evening and going from from one oh one southbound over the overpass to eastbound, there'll be maybe three cars lined up at the signals and only one car can make it through the traffic signal. That's happened quite a bit. So what is Caltrans going to do to make sure that those traffic signals are operating at peak efficiency in their sequencing and traffic flow? Another, a couple of issues have been brought up about emergency vehicles vehicles going across the overpass. What happens during holiday times? I've come home around Christmas time, coming from the north, southbound off of the freeway on the Paradise Drive and and the traffic's back up onto the freeway. Really looks like the alternative needs to have five lanes, two lanes each way, and then one middle lane for doing the left and right turn for going northbound, southbound in addition to the pedestrian and and bike crossing. So those it needs to be some significant expansion. Also, what is Caltrans going to do with the settlement on each side of the structure of the over crossing? So right now, going from west to east, you get a thrill ride going off of the ramp and down onto the 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 surface, the street surface. So I I hope Caltrans really does a real bang up job on this, and it's not like the surface streets from Golden Gate Bridge to Nevada on one oh one, not surface streets, but one oh one. The surface street on one oh one or surfaces are absolutely terrible. Going from Corder Madera to Nevada probably hit about ten potholes that shifted the vehicle. It's a significant amount. So I hope Caltrans really gets on the ball and does a quality job and not just a half-hearted job.
Thanks, Roy. I don't see any hands raised. Do we get any public email comments in?
Yes, we did receive one earlier, which has been uploaded to the agenda in the Agenda Center. And I will go ahead and read that comment for the three minutes. This was from Raymond Santiago from the Golden Gate Bridge High Wind Transportation District. Okay, so I'll go ahead. Dear Honorable Mayor and Town Council, the Golden Gate Bridge High Wind Transportation District would like to express its support for Caltrans's Marin County US Highway one oh one Tamalpais over crossing project in concept. We understand that the primary objectives of the project are to provide ADU compliant access across US one oh one at Tamalpais Drive over crossing seismic or seismic improvements and repairs and maintenance of the existing structure. The Marin County US Highway one oh one Tamalpais over crossing project initial study with proposed negative declaration was released to the public on July seventh, twenty twenty two, and the public comment period will close on August twenty second, twenty twenty two. Unfortunately, neither of the transit agencies serving the subject interchange, the district nor Marin Transit had been involved with or with or notified of the project prior to release of the ISMD. District staff was not even made aware of the project until July eleventh, twenty twenty two and is in the process of reviewing available materials to form an opinion and provide comments to submit to Caltrans before the August twenty second deadline. The district owns and operates Golden Gate Transit and has been serving the existing freeway bus pads within the interchange for over fifty years. The bus pads have provided Golden Gate Transit buses with the means of providing more efficient service to its regional bus patrons than a bus stop located within the on-off ramps could. Unfortunately, each of the proposed alternatives in the ISMD include removal of one or two both of the freeway bus pads and propose to replace them with bus stops within the on-off ramps. This would introduce additional travel time and delay for the eighty-two buses, forty-two northbound and forty southbound serving these stops on weekdays and fifty-eight buses, two nine northbound and two nine southbound serving these stops on weekends. Another concern is that the placement of the southbound bus stop on alternative three A, three B, four A and four B poses it within the right turn pocket, making the bus movement to the southbound one oh one on ramp a challenging and illegal maneuver. Having not been involved with preparation of the project, nor the ISMD, the district is extremely concerned that transit was not given proper consideration with respect to efficiency, delays, alternative modes and greenhouse gases. Initial concerns with removing the freeway bus pads include increased delays for regional bus service, schedules of regional bus routes were complex and tightly scheduled and take into account the minimal time it takes to serve the bus pads. Subjecting regional buses to the interchange traffic signals would create unpredictable delays that could compound over the course of the day to a point where schedules would be unrecoverable. Unrecoverable, sorry. There are three more bullet points. Yeah. There's two more bullet points in another paragraph, but this is on the website already for everyone to look at.
All right, thanks. And there's no other email comments?
Let me just check again one more time. No, there are no additional comments.
Thanks. I'll go ahead and close public comment. RJ, can you you address any of the questions, maybe briefly, that were raised? And I know you're writing them down. I wasn't. Thanks.
Yeah, so Mayor Casas, there was, you know, quite a bit of discussion about the transit changes, and I think a lot of them were answered in that last letter by Golden Gate Transit, but in general, many of the bus stops are moving as part of these proposal terms from being on the freeway to being on the on and off ramp. So there's kind of a trade off there. One, there's a you know, safety improvement by not being on the freeway, not having to cross the freeway. But then it has the potential to increase the overall trip, which then could reduce ridership. So there's a balance there, and I think there's fair arguments on both sides, but that is essentially what is going on, although there is one bus stop that in several scenarios that appears to be being moved. So as you're going exiting, as you're heading northbound, as you're exiting on Tamalpais and you're making a left-hand turn to go toward Tamalpais or Tam Mount Tam on the right-hand side, there is currently a bus stop. And in several of the scenarios, that would be removed, including the proposed four B. However, there we think there's opportunity for further analysis and and maybe there's an opportunity to put that somewhere within the project where it it minimizes impacts. Otherwise, the next closest stop, I believe, is down at Madera. There's a question about do all options allow walking between village and town center? And the answer is yes, there is the accessibility that does connect, although some have a better experience for bike and peds and have a more direct line. And so that's kind of where the four B has some benefits, some some more significant improvements than, say, the two A and two B options. So which ones have the separated paths? That's the the three series and the four series, whereas the two A, two B is more of the class two bike lanes kind of within the existing footprint of the bridge. And those are the ones I have written down. Any the others that I miss or?
Yeah, I think there's a Caltrans would be better able to respond to the lifespan question. I think that Patty Stoliar raised in terms of what is the expected lifespan of the bridge?
Hopefully, it's a long time.
There's also a question about assembling a design team, something like that. I don't know if you could respond to that?
Yeah, so I think I think it's a it's a good comment. One of the, you know, staff, we've been thinking about the process at this phase of the process. And really, you know, we are going to be really they're at the environmental, I forget the exact terminology they use, but the alternative and environmental determination phase. And so that's where we are now. And while we are discussing a lot about different alternative design concepts, I think it sounds like there'll be opportunity and maybe we want to amend the resolution to include a request for public comment during the design phase of the project. But there would be discussion during that time to get into perhaps some more design detail. I I would say we've been looking at this as, you know, ongoing staff level discussions regarding funding, which is the most important aspect of the project now. And and getting to an alternative that really has that separated bike pad access. And then certainly providing updates to BPAC as we move through this process with information and then as well obviously, coming back to the town council as needed and working with the town council on updates as well. I think there's there's certainly, it I I think it remains to be seen, frankly, at this point. If we're going to get into a design discussion about how to mesh certain options, I think we can raise certain points to Caltrans. But it's more or less right now, a a a sort of a a discussion about the different alternatives that are out there and the overall cost of those alternatives and the project components that we're sort of talking about rather than getting into like specific design changes. But I I respect the certainly respect the comments and the comments about the civic. You know, the making this a civic statement for the town as well, which are all well-taken. So.
Yeah, and to add to that, so I mean, I do view these as concepts, and you know, some of the details have been outlined, but others haven't. You know, we only know a lot of the dimensions and widths because we've asked those questions and have heard the answers in these public workshops. And, you know, they've, Caltrans has expressed some flexibility and said, hey, you know, for instance, four B, I think on the rendering, maybe it shows it as a sidewalk on the southbound side, but I think on the the more detailed plan view exhibit, it shows a green painted class two. And we said, hey, you know, which one is it? And and they said, you know, that's something that potentially is is open for discussion and design. So I think those are are good comments to hear. I think it's good in the spirit of Caltrans willing to kind of massage and work through some of those things. But I think also we should be realistic that the larger changes are going to be much harder to come by and that for me, I think of any high price tag things or things that really expand the width of the you know, the structure significantly are are going to be challenging.
Thanks. With that question. Go ahead.
So RJ, to be clear, because I know we talked about this at BPAC, if we were to say tonight, we wanted to go with four B, we would have the opportunity to work with Marin Transit and Golden Gate to really optimize where the bus stops should be so that we optimize travel times and attend, you know, everything on the buses, make sure we get as many people as possible. We have the opportunity to do that. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, and to go even further, I think they said they were going to reach out and have a stakeholder meeting with them as well. So even better where we're not caught in the middle and they can meet with them directly.
I just wanted to establish we still have the opportunity to refine that because we don't want to destroy bus ridership at all by doing this. Thank you.
Yeah, so the the other one is is ultimately if we do when we're talking about looking at new funding resources, is that only internal to Caltrans? Or ultimately, if we could identify other funding sources through other entities that are also related to the transportation in Marin that come to the table, would that give greater access to the input in the design and the desired outcomes for the regional economy and such and not be beholden to you know, global larger state kind of mandates and interests? And have you had experience with that? I mean, is that like an alternative? Is that when we talk about funding, is it only saying Caltrans, go find more funding? Or are we looking at potential outside of Caltrans federal funding? You know, what is the mechanism ultimately that we might be able to secure those type of grants for? For example.
So so Charles, we figured you'd be getting money out of TAM.
So I we 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 have a short list of grant sources that we're, you know, we're going to explore further. we, we have a short list of, of grant sources that we're, you know, we're going to explore further, um, you know, but but obviously I think, you know, a lot of this really has to come from Caltrans and um, you know, at some point, perhaps, you know, there's a discussion here about, uh, some smaller contribution, but by by no means, I don't think based on our CIP, we can on the shortfall. So it it needs and and based on the the merits of the project, based on the complete streets policies for both the town and Caltrans, um, I think it really is, should be this kind of four B project or something very close to it. Um, so that's really what we want to push for and hope that everyone kind of jumps on board. And, um, it's going to take some time potentially, and that's why we want to have that flexibility and and, um, I'll I'll touch on that a little bit when we get to the resolution. And then beyond that, I did want to get back to the design committee question. I I I think staff is open to kind of more one over the other. The problem is we have a very active BPAC, one that cares very much about this project. And so the more we create an ad hoc committee, the less we can also cater to both and potentially get conflicting messages. So, um, I I think that's where we're at. It's kind of funnel toward one forum where we can all have conversations and historically it has been BPAC advising council.
And and not to do, I know we're we're late here, but I think it's it's reasonable and just want to get that this out there that I think it's reasonable to expect also that Caltrans at the end of the day may be looking for, uh, uh, the as well, a request from the town or to contribute as well to this project in some form. So I just want to put that out there. Um, we will see where that conversation goes. TAM is also, I think, a important partner in this as well. Um, and so that's sort of where, you know, these discussions and conversations will likely go in the next weeks and months ahead.
And and sorry for jumping back and forth, but and as we move from discussions about project functionality to what I would call amenities, I think there's less likely for Caltrans to push funds of their own toward the amenity side. Right? So.
Any other questions for RJ? Okay, with that, I'll bring him back to council for discussion, and we are looking for a possible motion to adopt resolution number, uh, forty-three slash two oh twenty-two in support of alternative for the go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, um. This is my fourth meeting on this in the last two weeks. Um, we've met with bicycle advocacy groups. We, I was at the Caltrans meeting. We met with BPAC. And, uh, we spent a lot of time on this and, um, to really understand it. And it, because it's complicated. So, you know, you're all seeing it for the first time this evening, but and I know it's difficult, but, um, I also started on this in two thousand and seven, believe it or not. And that's how long this project's been going on. It started with the roadway sinking and it causes a gap in the roadway on the way onto one-on-one, and we have to shut it down. We have to fix it and it takes months to, you know, shut down to fix. So that's where it started. And it was about five years ago that Craig Hartman came in to this whole thing from Skidmore, Owens and Maryland as a resident and really showed us what this could be and what it could be. This town was divided into two when Highway one-on-one was built, where there was an east side and a west side, and now there's an east side and a west side. And what this can do is really bring the two sides of town together again by creating a safe and separate pedestrian, um, bicycle path across, and it could be really nice. And it could really make, have people commuting easily. Um, and walking back and forth, it could also bring the shopping centers together. People will be able to walk from one shopping center to the other. Um, in the meetings, I won't go into a lot of detail. We went through all six of these options in extensive detail in our first meeting. And RJ pointed out in that meeting succinctly that we should really look at traffic implications. Uh, and he, at the next meeting, he came back with, having looked at the traffic implications and showed us that three A, three B and four A are just completely unacceptable. I mean, you know, to have three or four light changes on one-on-one at rush hour, and that's on a normal day, Christmas. I mean, don't even think about it. I mean, we'd get barbecued if we approved something like that, right? And deservedly so. So those are just not acceptable to us. Two A and T B, two B do not have separate, safe and separate bike paths. I mean, so and pedestrian paths. So that really gets us to four B, which is a terrific solution to this thing. Uh, it solves and fits all the complete streets um, project, uh, which is part of what Caltrans is trying to do, part of what we're trying to do. Importantly, I believe both school districts support this as well. I talked to Brett Geithman, uh, about it the other day, and I thought we'd have it for the meeting. Uh, but he's going to get this school, uh, he, I think the school board is going to sign off on supporting four B. I think the same thing is going to happen to Tamalpais Union High School. So I think we're all unified on this. Uh, from a community standpoint, and as I, and I know, you know, um, the Marin Bicycle Coalition is behind it and everyone's behind this. And as RJ pointed out, we can, if we get going on this, resolve the bus stop issues, which do need to be resolved. We do need to really optimize that and figure that out, but that can be done. Because right now, the situation there is unacceptable. I mean, running across the off-ramp to a bus stop for Northbound one-on-one is is crazy. Um, and we need to fix that and this, this, this will do that. So I would love to see us move ahead with four B, pursue it, see what happens, you know, and I think we can just figure it out. But as RJ also said, this is a seventy-five-year solution. So let's do it right. Let's get it right and make this something permanent that can bring the two sides of the town together. Thank you. And I'll move four B.
Thanks. Um, let me hold off on your motion. Do we have a other comments and I'll go back to you, Lila?
Thanks. Yeah. And, um, appreciate everyone's hard work on this. Um, yeah, I I really appreciate all of the, um, analysis that's gone into this. This is complicated stuff. And, um, I think I agree with Bob. I feel like, uh, the community is on the same page in terms of the things that are important to us. So I would also support, um, moving forward with four B. Again, with a caveat that I do think we need to figure out the bus stuff because that's, that's really important, um, both from a safety perspective, but also to make sure that we continue to have good bus service here, um, so people can access our town who don't live here and don't or don't drive. Thanks.
Eli.
Yeah, thank you. Completely agree with with what you guys said. Um, you know, first of all, thank you, Caltrans. Thank you, staff. RJ, you've been so helpful, helping us really like digest what it is that we're dealing with here. The community, Craig especially, I know you've dedicated a lot of your personal time and and resources to helping, you know, put forward what I think is a really beautiful vision for the town, uh, and even more exciting than how beautiful it is. It's within reach. Uh, you know, it is possible. So I think that's, that's incredible. I cannot stress enough how this is a once in a lifetime opportunity for us. As you said, Bob, as you said, Lila, as you said, RJ, this, I mean, this is in my opinion, this is hands down the most important piece of transit infrastructure we have in Corder Madera. I think I I would guess that the majority of the town uses it every single day. Uh, you know, probably millions of motorists pass under it every month. We heard in BPAC that I think four hundred to seven hundred cars use these on-ramps every hour in a normal day. Uh, so, I mean, this is, this is key. This is the the biggest transit project that we could possibly do in Corder Madera, the most important. So like you guys said, we can't, you know, we can't miss this one. Um, I'm not going to repeat everything that you guys said. I think, I think you're spot on in terms of the deficiencies um, of the other alternatives. I think the obvious answer is going to be based on four B. Um, the one thing that I that I want to add is that it, you know, I think what's important in addition to obviously it being safe, I think it also has to feel safe. Um, and and what does that mean? It means that when you're walking, especially when you're walking over it, you're biking over it, you of course need to feel safe, but you're passing through it relatively quickly. If you're walking over it, you're on that bridge for a much longer period of time. If you've got the busy Tamalpais roadway right next to you, cars roaring by back and forth. I mean, you can walk on it right now, right? And simulate that exact experience. It's really unpleasant and it doesn't feel safe. It feels like a car could very easily jump the curb. You know, somebody could trip and fall into the roadway. Um, so so what does it mean if it feels safe? To me, that that suggests something, some sort of hard barrier, uh, right, that separates the the multi-use path from the roadway. I think that's critical. Um, you know, I think going above and beyond that, and this is more to kind of the vision that you offered, Craig, I think plantings on that barrier I think are key. I think it's within reach in terms of a a funding standpoint, right? In the scope of this project, it's, it's not going to make or break the project. Uh, but what it could do is really offer that sense of screening, right? If you've got vegetation, screening the pedestrians and the bicyclists from the roadway, I think is key. If we were able to get some trees in there, it would offer some shade. Obviously, again, I know that that now we're getting into amenities, right? And that is a little bit beyond the the core functions that this thing has to have. The functions are the baseline for sure. I don't think we compromise on things like safety, uh, you know, a a separate multi-use path. But I would say let's really look at what we can and be as creative as we can in terms of pursuing that vision of of something that's a little bit nicer and really feels safe, feels pleasant for people to use and is going to invite folks to use it. Uh, you know, if it doesn't feel good or doesn't feel safe to use, people won't use it. And if people don't use it, there's no point, uh, you know, to in investing this money. So uh, that's the one thing that that I would just harp on there. I think that's really getting at a a question that I think a lot of us are getting at and that a lot of the public comment got at, which is that we still have a lot sort of of unresolved questions about the specific design elements of this thing, whether it's landscaping or whether it's even how the ramps, uh, you know, on-ramps are figured, multi-use, uh, pathways. Uh, you know, bus stops, right? We can't lose bus service. Um, so I think it's clear that there's a lot, a lot still to be worked out in a very short period of time. I'm I'm appreciate that we've got this, uh, request for more time in our resolution. I think that's key. I don't know how, like, how we would be supposed to, uh, come to a successful, you know, come to a successful jumping off point on this project in the, a lot of time given before December. That just seems uh, crazy to me. But anyways, these details are for future discussion. I'm very hopeful that we're going to find the time to have those discussions and and to bring the community in because I think that's so important. Um, you know, right now, my focus, obviously, I I think our focus collectively, it sounds like is is really supporting, uh, four B as our starting point. Uh, the funding, obviously, another serious question, I think, is, as you said, RJ and Adam, I think, you know, I certainly am hopeful that that Caltrans is going to pony up a little bit more. I don't feel just being totally candid, I don't feel that two A and two B are credible options. They don't even meet Caltrans own, uh, you know, complete streets. Policy standards. So I I don't know how you come you know, to us with that as a starting bid and say, this is what, this is where like you need to close the gap from. So I'm hopeful that there's more discussions to have there. I know Caltrans has worked really hard on this. We're ready to be a partner for sure. Um, you know, I think it's also obviously going to be a question about looking at TAM, looking at grants. Um, you know, we'll see what we can do as a town. Obviously, we're, you know, our our capacity is very limited. Um, but you know, all in all, I'm really hopeful with where we're at. I'm I'm hopeful that we're coalescing around four B. I think that's a good thing. I think the vision that you've offered, Craig, and that the community is really right, a lead around is fantastic. It's beautiful. Um, and so that's who I'm going to be supporting. I'm happy to vote for this resolution. You know, thank you for listening.
Since I moved to Corder Madera, that overpass has been dangerous and unsafe. My children refuse to use it, either walking or riding bicycles. They have sporting events. I want to go shop at the village and it is completely unnerving and completely destroys the connection between our community. And when I evaluate the designs, I look for the one that will heal that wound because it's the biggest thing I could do for Corder Madera at this point, and only four B comes to that conclusion. And even that, it relies a lot on amenities because it is a community connection that we're really talking about. And so the ultimate funding source needs to understand which town they're driving through and running through and respect that basically it's a lot more than just seismic upgrading that they're choosing. Um, and and acknowledge that and have those discussions, uh, and and basically engage our local and regional uh, stakeholders in an appropriate manner to come to conclusions that actually improve the infrastructure and are not just stopgaps. So I also, um, continue to support four B.
I guess I'm last. Um, I too can support four B. Something I think, Craig, you may have said that I didn't really think about is that this project should be a point of civic pride. And I almost compare it to Town Hall. When when that gets done, that's something when people drive by or they see what we've done, they go, hey, that is really a great building that was built, uh, by the town. I think the same thing should be said of an overpass. I, I'm sorry, over crossing. Um, you know, when people are driving down or using an overpass, instead of just going in, it's an overpass, it'd be great if they go, hey, this is really neat. It has bike lanes on both sides. It has safety for pedestrians. I just think that the vision is there. We just need to execute on it. I do worry about the funding and I would almost rather see us if we have to delay the project if it gets to that point, if we don't have the funding in place. I'd rather not go, we don't have the money. Let's go to a two A or two B, which I don't think are options to begin with. Um, I think Bob said we've been waiting for ten plus years and I shouldn't say this, but if we have to move it back another year to catch another funding cycle where we can't fund it, I think we're better off doing that. I don't think the town can afford to come up with the whole nine million, even when you come up with two to three million and not affect CIP projects. We still have that, um, that gap there. I do think that the bus paths really need to be looked at. I think this has been brought up before because I know when I go southbound to get on the freeway, there's people that are are crossing literally, it, you're coming down blind when you're driving down that that entrance. And people, I'm surprised nobody's been hit there, um, if they haven't been already. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. Um, and I would like to see, I know what you're saying about B, about not doing a separate design team, having it all filtered through B-PED, but I would like to see Craig involved with that. Maybe we can make an honorary B-PED member, um, just on a temporary basis because I think he brings vision and insight and has the expertise from an outside kind of looking in. Um, plus I think you've been working on this for years, where I think B-PED may just get wrapped up in some of the more the bicycle pedestrian type aspects of it, maybe a little bit more. But I think he has more of the expertise. So if we can make sure we include him in um, on that part of it, I think that'd be great. And I think we do need to go back to Caltrans and figure that part out, how we get our community involved in the design phase. And I don't know if that filters from B-PED up to us and then Caltrans. I think we need a process in in place for that. Um, so those are my comments. With that, Bob has a motion to go ahead and approve resolution number forty-three slash two oh twenty-two.
Mayor Casilla, may I suggest two minor edits to that resolution? Based on what I'm hearing and Amy, if you can verify these are acceptable. Um, so under number two, we've said council requests that Caltrans extend the current project approval and environmental document completion date by six, twelve months beyond December twenty twenty-two. I'm saying I'd like to revise it to up to twelve months, meaning we don't need to extend it if we found the money. Um, and then lastly, add a third bullet that speaks to, I think, of a lot of what you just said is add a process for public in-town input in the design phase. And really that doesn't, you know, that covers the the, you know, transit and potentially a whole slew of other components.
I I don't have any problem with those. I think by extending it to twelve months, I think it takes the pressure and the stress off staff. And I want to say others, um, you know, trying to get funding through, um, TAM or through, um, Ca- Caltrans. It kind of takes that pressure off and it gives us more time, not only to get the funding, but also maybe to develop and get more involved in the design phase upfront like that. Um, so, um, Bob had a motion. Um, are you okay with those changes?
I'd like to move, will we approve it as amended?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other further discussion? Okay, go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Longan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Mary Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Casilla.
Uh, yes, and I appreciate everybody's time on this. Um, this is probably one of the longest agenda items we had, but I think it was well worth the discussion and all the input that was provided. Thank you. Okay. With that, we'll move to the consent calendar.
Mayor, I'm so sorry. Could we take just a two-minute bathroom big break, please? I've been hydrating myself on this hot day.
No, go ahead. Uh, we're going to take a two-minute, uh, break and we'll be back at
Thanks.
Okay, sorry, I have to repeat. Uh, we're moving on. Sorry, I didn't have my mic on. Uh, we're moving on to consent items. These are items are a normal course of business. Uh, they don't require further discussion. They can be, um, approved by a single motion. Anyone from the town council staff or public may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Um, with that is I am going to remove four E for separate discussion, only because Eli and myself, we're going to have to recuse ourselves because, um, we live in homes that are in those areas. Um, so with that, what I would like to do before I turn it over to Mayor Lee, is there any other items that need to be pulled? Can I do this? Amy's looking at me strange. You have to re- Can I go through that part and then recuse for four E? Okay, thank you. Thanks. Um, do we have any public comments or anybody from staff that wishes to pull an item, other item besides four E?
We do not have any public comment on the consent calendar.
Okay. And so with that, I'll go ahead and close public comment, and I'm looking for a motion to approve items four A through four J with the exception of four E. So move. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Longan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Mary Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Casilla.
Uh, yes. And with that, yeah, Eli and myself are going to like go to the back corner. And I'll turn it over to, um, Vice Mary Lee.
Okay, um. So so do I have to read the actual four E or should I?
I move to approve four E.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, um, can we take a vote?
Um, just checking for public comment and it looks like we do not have it have any and we don't have any emailed public comment. So I'll go ahead and do a real call vote. Um, do I have to call all of them or just the one? Okay, I'll call all of the names. Councilmember Beckman? Recused. Councilmember Longan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Mary Lee?
Yes.
And Mayor Casilla recused himself. Thank you.
Okay, with that.
Close it. Bring back Mayor Casilla.
Didn't hear a word. Two minutes of
Thank you.
Wow.
Okay, with that. Okay, with that, we'll, we'll go ahead and move to item five, which is public hearings. This is to discuss and consider adoption of urgency ordinance. So number ten oh twenty-one, um, barring evictions in the town of Corder Madera. And I'm going to turn it over to Amy and also to Adam. I guess it's the A and A team. Um, and do we need a motion on this? I can never remember on the public hearings or do we have to wait? We do need a motion. Okay. Or come back to us for a possible motion. You guys are fighting over it?
Good evening, councilmembers. Amy Ackerman, town attorney. Uh, we have before you today an urgency ordinance to uh, to um, uh, a short-term uh eviction moratorium uh due to the COVID uh, public health pandemic. Um, this item, uh, we are taking in concert with Marin County and other Marin jurisdictions to help uh prevent further homelessness due to COVID. Uh, there have been a series of measures that uh, the first the county and then state adopted to um, uh, uh, temporary, a temporary moratorium on eviction orders uh, due to the economic impact of the crisis. Uh, the state eviction ordinance has now expired. Uh, the county and the, the local jurisdictions want to extend the moratorium because the state offered rental uh assistance to those affected by COVID. And the state money is distributed to the counties and the county is a bit behind in processing all the applications. But should be completed with the applications to September thirtieth. So we want to ensure that any applicants who had um uh, applied for the funds but have not yet had their applications approved are prevented from eviction. So this is an urgency ordinance, uh, so we need a four-fifths vote and we need to, we can adopt it tonight to make it effective immediately. With that, I'm happy to take any questions from council.
Are there any questions from council members? No, uh, with that, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comments.
We do not um have any email public comment, but we have a raised hand from David McPearson.
You can bring, go ahead and bring over David, please. And we don't have anybody uh here in person that is at the podium.
Good evening. Again, my question would be whether or not the town attorney has identified any tenants who are actually have applied and are waiting to have funds distributed. Um, I say that because in some of my work on behalf of landlords, uh, it, it appears to me that most of the funds for Marin County have been distributed. And anyone who timely requested rental assistance, whether they were a tenant or a landlord, has already received those funds. And so before the town extends protections, uh, I'd like to know whether or not we really can identify whether the protections are necessary for any town tenants. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, and with that, I don't see any other hands raised. Any uh emails received?
Emails were received.
Uh, thanks. With that, I'll go ahead and close the public comment. And Amy, can you answer the question?
Um, I don't personally have this information, but I can say that this request came um from the county because the county office was still in the process of distributing the funding. So as far as the county is concerned, there is some outstanding funding that hasn't been processed and they anticipate uh, completing that by the end of September. So we're doing this in concert with other jurisdictions, but no, we don't have a, a breakdown of, of uh, in which particular jurisdiction the tenants live.
All right, thank you. Um, is there any other questions for Amy? No, with that, we'll bring you back to town council for discussion and or possible motion to approve uh urgency ordinance number uh ten oh twenty-one. Move to approve. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Um, any other further discussion? Go and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Longan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Mary Lee? Okay.
Yes.
Mayor Kisa.
Yes, and with that, we'll move to uh business item six A, everybody's favorite topic, the housing element. Um, and I'm going to turn it over to Adam and Martha.
Great, thanks. If you, I think we have a presentation that, or thanks Rebecca for pulling that up. Um, good evening, councilmembers. Um, Mayor Kisa, this is an item, uh, we last spoke, I think before the release of the draft housing element in June. Um, on July eighth, um, staff released the draft housing element for a thirty-day public review comment period as required by state law. Um. So that's this, sort of this document that I'm holding up. It's a pretty thick five hundred-plus page uh draft housing element that includes, you know, several uh chapters that um, I think you're aware of if you've been through past housing element cycles, but all good information, a lot of which we covered in our workshop series over the uh fall and winter of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, we've talked a lot about chapter three, the housing sites. So, you know, we're not necessarily going to go over that today. Um, but that's, uh, just want to familiarize you all with, with sort of what's actually in the document. Although I know you've read every page and every word, um, but there's a constraint section in chapter four. Uh, and then chapter five is really also an important part of the housing element and draft housing element, which is the goals, policies and programs that essentially are the policies that we are um, have drafted. Ultimately, we'll come back for the, to the town council for adoption and which will guide staff, staff's work program with respect to uh, housing in the eight years from twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one. So you can go to the next slide. Um, as you know, we've done a lot of public outreach with respect to um, this housing element. Uh, just in July and August, we held four uh pop-up workshops, uh, including at the July fourth parade. Um, uh, we've sent a direct postcard mailer to all residents and residences in town, again, just trying to solicit as much public feedback and awareness of this project and this important um, uh, update to the, the housing element. We had a focus group at San Clemente Place and really this is sort of the post-workshop um series. Uh, we're uh, uh, numbers that we're showing you here in terms of the amount of people who participated in these pop-up workshops, the amount of feedback forms we received and the unique visitors to the website. Uh, next slide. This just shows sort of since during the public comment period, um, or how our website, it continues to be a good source of information for our community with respect to the housing element update. Um, next slide, you can go. And so we've uh closed the public comment period on August eighth and received twenty-one uh written comments. Fifteen comments from residences and businesses and then six comments from community-based and advocacy organizations, which we've included in attachment one to your staff report. Um, really in order to try to synthesize the comments um, and, and also discuss how we've uh attempted to draft uh, at least preliminary responses to some of these comments and, and, and actually we've updated and revised the housing element in, in response to some of the comments. Um, I will, I will note some of the comments came in last week and so they were pretty dense as well. And so we just uh, appreciate actually the, the thoughtfulness of a lot of the comment letters that we did receive from many groups who took the time and energy to, to read and comment on specific policies and programs. So that should be noted. Um, and uh, you know, we're still sort of digesting some of the comments, but we did put together a matrix. Martha uh put together a matrix, I should say, uh, that uh, that uh, summarized really the, the comments, the draft responses and then how if, and if we changed actually the, the draft housing element in response to the comments, which is reflected in the, the draft revised housing element, which was, I think, included in attachment three. Um. See, I have comments essentially. We're not going to go over, happy to go through any specific comments or questions you have on some of the comments, but you know, essentially. Oh, here we are. We had um, some of the comments mostly from residents were, were speaking to specific sites that uh, either were requested to be eliminated from uh the site inventory of the housing element or relocated to another location. Um, uh, res- responses to that really reflect similar to six oh one Table Pius Avenue, which we went over in June. Let's wait, let's wait on those discussions until we hear from HCD whether the, the sites that we've identified are um, can meet their criteria for inclusion um in our housing element. But comments noted. Um, we also had several comments from community-based and advocacy organizations uh commenting on and, and making note that the town should really commit more strongly uh or commit um, specifically to policies and actions around tenants' rights and other protections. Um, and we noted, you know, that's, I think, well, well taken, but we don't at this time think it's inappropriate to sort of go as far as actually saying we're going to adopt certain policies and bind future council uh really to those sort of actions. In fact, you know, note in the, in the staff report, that's really inappropriate to do so in a, in a plan like this. Um, but nonetheless, you know, consideration of those um, uh, uh, some of the policies and programs um can be, the language can be strengthened and we've attempted to start to do that uh, in our draft housing, revised draft housing element. And there are specific timelines as well that we note in terms of actually when that consideration of those certain policies um would happen in the next housing cycle. Um, so we'll continue to evaluate all the recommendations uh during the HCD uh review period. And, and also note that, you know, some of these comments may not be, we may not need to revise our housing element in order to get um, a compliant housing element, which is ultimately, you know, one of the things that we're trying to do here. Um, and uh, and so that's sort of where we are. We, we want to get this out in this terms of the timeline on August, as close to August twenty-third as we can uh, to HCD so that they have their ninety-day review period and that we have time once that is over to respond to comments in a timely manner and, and again, meet our ultimate goal of getting a housing element adopted by um, uh, really the state law requirements. Uh, one note about that is the housing element can actually be adopted with, by May of next year. Uh, but the rezonings and the environmental document that will go with that actually need to be adopted by January of twenty twenty-three. If we are to maintain our local control over our approval processes, which I know is something we're very focused on. Um, so with that, happy to, Martha, any, anything you would like to add to that staff report? Otherwise, I'm happy to, I think we're both here to answer questions you may have.
Yeah, I'll also just add that our housing element consultant, Christina Rourke, is also participating via Zoom and it is available to answer questions.
Yeah, and a big, big, huge thank you really to Christine, Christine and all the work that she's uh done to help us get to this point. More to come, but I do want, want to acknowledge her. And uh, forgot you were there on the screen, but I see you now. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Are there any questions of staff? Yeah, you like, go ahead.
Excellent. Thank you, uh, Adam, Martha. Thank you, Christine. Um, I just had uh one question right now. Page two of the staff report, it says, um, staff is working uh to create more definition to the place-based strategies and to add quantifiable objectives to several of the programs. Just wondering if you could maybe give like some examples of that?
Yes, so I'll, I'll defer a little bit to Christine on, on that question as well, but this is related to the AFFH, the affirmatively furthering fair housing objectives that are included in, in, I believe it's table twenty-seven in the housing element. So there's a variety of different objectives to affirmably further fair housing. And one thing we heard from our consultants is they really need to have um, very clear timelines of when they're going to be achieved and you need to have objectives of how you're going to measure that you've achieved um the goal. So Christine, if there's anything you want to add to that, specific policies?
Sure. So just as a couple of examples, um, some of the things that we're looking at are, because they really do want these to be clear, quantified object, objectives. So one um was to increase town newsletter uh circulation by twenty percent. Another one was um, to increase the number of housing choice vouchers utilized in, in Corder Madera by fifty percent and this would all be by twenty thirty. So, um, so there, there, there are things like that where we already have an action, but we're talking about kind of adding a number to the, to the objective.
Thank you. And I believe, I, I think we also actually talked about even the overcrossing project could be a place-based strategy connecting communities on the east side, especially some of our uh, uh, lower income housing on the east side um, of, of the highway uh to the west side, like, you know, also we have pro- project Home Key with new residents coming in. Um, uh, who are moving in as we speak uh to that property. So it, employees that may be working at the village and town center, et cetera. That's actually a place-based strategy that we've heard. Uh, maybe something that um, uh, is, is what HCD and the state is looking for in terms of how we are affirmatively furthering uh fair housing and mobility, I think, for residents who may be in uh affordable housing or lower income units.
Any other questions? I just have one. I'm sorry, go ahead, Bob.
Sorry, I meant to ask this of you this afternoon, but I've just had a question as I'm going through this today. The Macy's site, the zoning on that, is it residential or residential over commercial or is there a requirement there still be some commercial along with residential above it? Or are you still figuring that out?
See, yeah, it's interesting. No, no, but I think, I think the idea is certainly that, yeah, we would, we know commercial is important there. Um, and so we would likely have a floor of commercial use at that site as when we draft the zoning um regulations for that.
So the first floor would be commercial and then residential, bu- bubba.
Yeah, or if they want to do it another way, they could. Exactly, exactly. Some amount of either uh, of floor area, essentially some amount of square footage of commercial space would be required at that site. And we, I think we started, that was the premise of which we analyzed under the uh environmental document as well, includes that. Thank you.
I just have one. There's in, um, there's a number of policies, procedures, I want to say action items in the document. Again, you don't have to flip through it. Don't worry. I'm not going to ask you any specifics. It could be high level. I see the page is flipping. And then Christina just mentioned a couple of examples. How? How are, are you going to track those? How do they get reported up to us? So it's not one of these things where, you know, we have a document, we approve it, um, state approves it and then it just kind of gets shelved as a plan. And then like seven years from now, it's like, oh yeah, we did something. How, how does, how does all that get checked? And how do we hold you guys accountable?
Yep.
Um, to making sure those programs get implemented or pieces of them get implemented.
Right. That, that's a great question. And I think, you know, one, one answer to that is that every year we are required to do a, a annual progress report to HCD. That's comes in April every year. Most of the time we focus on the number of units that have been built. But it's actually uh an evaluation of all our policies and programs that were in our housing element the prior, previous cycle. And, and we report on essentially if we've done those things that we said we're going to do or not. Um, and so that's a, an opportunity to talk through those um particular policies and programs. I will say, in the past, the practice has been, you could sort of like throw a bunch of stuff out there and, and, you know, it looks good. But the reality is, I don't, I, I think we're trying to now strip away some of the things that we think were just unrealistic. I mean, all these things do take staff time, capacity uh has to be considered, resources have to be brought to bear to do these policies and programs. And so um, it is a, an attempt to really put together a realistic timeframe for action and address sort of, you know, these will be coming up when we have our work plan conversations. Like, look, we said we're going to do these things. We need to put that on there. That's going to maybe have to uh, you know, outweigh some of the other things that um we may have wanted to get to in those conversations from a capacity standpoint. So um, so I think it's really important to monitor and keep track of how we're doing on the progress. And that was also one of the reasons why I think committing to doing X, Y, and Z more strongly gives me some pause just because, uh, you know, there may be a more efficient way to do it. Partnering with the county seems like a great way to start to think about addressing. Uh, you know, bringing more resources to the housing issues. Um, so that may, you know, anyways, that's, that's a long way of answering your question, but I think it's an important one to get out there. So thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, thanks. Any other questions? I'll go ahead and open up for public comment. I don't, yeah, go ahead. If you can just go to the podium, thanks.
Evening. My name is Luke Barnes. I'm the program director for Home Match Marin. We have a public comment in there that gives a little more context on the program. Our nonprofit home sharing program, we help mostly older adults who are looking to rent a room in their home or apartment to connect with folks that are looking for affordable housing in the community. Happy to field more questions later when we're not in a late meeting. I just wanted to come and thank the planning staff for getting us into the element.
Thanks. Thanks. I appreciate all the work you guys are doing. Any other, do we get any email public comments in?
We do not have any emailed public comments.
Okay, thanks. We do have one hand raised. If you can bring over Bob, please.
Good evening. My my name is Bob Pendola. I'm speaking for the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative. We're a group of advocates who support projects and policies that advance affordable housing, environmental integrity and social justice. Basically, we're just calling in to endorse your housing element. We think you've really done a great job. While we do see some, a couple of places that could be upgraded a little bit. We think overall this is really excellent. We're particularly impressed with your outreach effort, which we think has been responsive and effective. A couple of things we're concerned about. Basically, we think the 11 non vacant sites you've identified for most of your higher density housing are appropriate. We note that nine of them have support from the homeowners. We're hoping you're able to provide incentives to bring in the other two. I think the most significant request we have would be that you'd reconsider your mixed use overlay district quarter. We think it's appropriate that you've you've looked at the mixed use overlay district that supported the wind cup property as a success in terms of, at least in terms of the overall production of units. That that district allows 40 units to the acre. We think it'd be appropriate if extended that to the mixed use overlay district. In other words, increase the allowed density from 30 units to 40 units to the acre. Overall, we think this is really an excellent housing element, and we would like to thank and congratulate you. That's the end of my comments.
Thanks. I appreciate those. And I don't see any other hands raised. No email comes out, go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council. We are looking for a vote, correct on this?
Other directions.
So we're looking for a direction to submit the draft to HCD to begin their 90 day review. Or alternatively, if there's any changes you'd like us to make to the draft before we do so, then please let us know.
Thanks. So go ahead.
Quick question. With the with the goals that we have in our in our draft housing, I'm trying to remember, do we have any goals related to, for example, reducing evictions that are not just cause X amount by X year?
In the current or the proposed?
The the proposed draft.
Yeah, I think it was want to say program H 3.2. That does speak to get that language actually. So we do have tenant protection strategies and it does say, you know, essentially H 3.2 point B, work with the county Marin and other Marin jurisdictions to explore stress, explore and develop. We revised that to say explore and develop strategies that protect tenants from rapidly rising rents and displacement. These these may include, and it has a list. Just cause for eviction is on there. AB 1482 also establishes a specific set of reasons that tenancy can be terminated. These include fault and rent payment breach. And it lists several. So it's that's that's where it would be located.
Thank you. So I might, I might just make a comment to the council to consider that we change it from explore and develop to maybe develop and implement with the understanding these, these are not like finished policies, they're essentially policy goals or things that we want to address. But with the idea that we're not binding council to a specific policy, we're just basically listing the the things that we intend to address. That's the only comment I'd make, but I'm good with this having to move forward.
Okay, thanks. So I guess, go ahead. Are you good, Adam?
Well, yeah, I would just say that that under timeframe and and we we talk about explore options with Marin jurisdictions in 2024 and bring forward for council direction, including possible ordinance adoption in 2025.
Are you good with? Okay, so with that, it looks like we're providing direction to staff to go ahead and submit the draft housing element.
Just had a comment.
Go ahead.
Amazingly, this is the third time I've been through the housing element cycle and you guys have done an unbelievable job. I mean, truly remarkable. And it is because of all the input you've gotten, all the meetings you've taken. I mean, this seems so remarkably easy at this point. And it's because you guys have had so many meetings and have taken so much time to create such a comprehensive plan, get so much input and listen to everything that you heard. And I just, I just really got to commend you guys and say thank you because this is an absolutely remarkable effort and it's a remarkable report. Thank you. And I give direction to go forward.
Thanks. So we're good. Okay. So you have direction from us and I'll just echo what Bob said. I think what I find amazing is you guys started this in March of this year or so, or maybe before that. Countless hours. What's that? Go ahead.
About a year ago.
What I find amazing, you start, you start a year ago. Countless hours with community input. And I appreciate all your time also, Christine. And then, you know, it 500 page document, it comes to us and it blows my mind that within like 20 minutes, it gets approved and it's going to the state of California. But I think you made our job easier because we didn't have to sit here for hours discussing this. You just brought it to this point. It's like the the perfect storm. Probably the right, wrong, worst, perfect storm. But I think you know what I mean.
There's still, there's still more to go, but I appreciate the comments.
So I'm sorry, go ahead.
So this is where I'll go anecdotal on that. So while I'm not spending a lot of hours today talking about it at the beginning of the process, they invited us in to look at the process and what they were proposing to council and they had slotted a one hour timeline. And I think I sat there for two and a half hours and I still wanted more. So I'm sure that they've had that same kind of absorption rate of people's comments and and integration into it. And they did it from the very beginning. And so ever since I've had confidence in them and it's definitely delivered. And that's why we're not talking about it more tonight is because they listened to everyone. And so thank you. And I can definitely second Bob's motion. So.
I don't think we need a motion, right?
Or just whatever, like give direction to to submit it.
We're good. You guys are good to go. Thanks. With that, we'll go ahead and six be a consideration possible proof of the draft response that remain currently juror grand jury report regarding electrifying Marin's buildings, which is a county wide approach. We'll go to Chris.
Really excited to have Chris here to, I know he's worked hard and with other members of our of the county. Not only on the response here, but also you'll be hearing from him in the future on future code adoption process. So just want to welcome Chris. I don't know. This is your first presentation to the council.
To this council, yes.
Well, there was another one.
Welcome. And very pleased to be here. Thank you to Todd and Adam hiring me last November. I will try to make this brief.
Thank you.
Point.
You may want to move the name tag.
Oh, is it? There you go. Oh, I don't know. I like Martha. Why not? All right. So what I like about this grand jury report is it's county wide. So it's electrifying Marin's buildings, a county wide approach. And they have six findings, which we agree with. We don't have any contention with their findings. Then to summarize those findings. We could say roughly a third of greenhouse gas emissions come from buildings. And that in order to provide a solution to eliminate that or to reduce that dramatically, it needs to be a strategic plan county wide with all jurisdictions. And then they have three recommendations. One is to have all new buildings electrified. No gas, new buildings, newly constructed buildings. And the second recommendation is to have existing buildings going through renovations and changes to not be replaced with gas, fuel fired appliances. And the third is to have a comprehensive approach, taking a lot into account county wide. It can be an organized strategic planning approach to electrifying Marin's bill. And as far as the first recommendation, my suggestion was that it has not implemented yet, but it may be in the future. And the second one with existing buildings requires further analysis. And number three hasn't been implemented, but it may be implemented in the future. And as far as Marin County itself with the 12 jurisdictions, the 12 building departments, so to see, so to speak. Only two of them have actually decided to already begin recommendation one with electrifying new buildings. And they haven't decided on number two yet because it takes further analysis. And then three, everybody's on board. And as you know, the town started a climate action committee. We have a wonderful decision made where there's going to be a climate action coordinator working for the town. There is a technical working group that I'm part of, McCab. Marin County Association of Building Officials or Advisory Board, which is building officials around the county. There's many groups around the county. We're working together to try to do this in a uniform, consistent fashion. So with those recommendations, each one of them, I believe, will be implemented. But we just need further refined strategy and cohesiveness of how we're going to do it. To better serve the community, our contractors, our applicants, homeowners, business owners. To have a united, uniform approach. So it all will come into place. But just not yet. It needs to be more strategy. And I think if we do it at a county wide approach, because each one of the jurisdictions, except for two very similar are giving the same very similar response or giving very similar response each one of the jurisdictions. If we do it as a county, it also provides even more of a reason for the state of California in the next code cycle to say, we're going to electrify the whole state. So if just little jurisdictions are doing, it doesn't have near the power influence as the county saying, let's all work together, do in a consistent, uniform fashion. And then this more and more counties and bigger jurisdictions, then pretty soon the whole state will lead electrifying as they have in so many energy codes across the country. Questions?
Any questions from council members? Yeah, Eli, go ahead. Good presentation, by the way.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Chris. So I just want to make sure it's understanding. So the response to our one here too says that council is going to consider a reach code ordinance later this fall. So does that mean that that, and I'm going to try not to get too excited, but does that mean that there will be an ordinance before us this fall regarding electrifying all new construction in Cortum Madira?
That would be ideal.
Okay.
And that's very likely.
Okay.
Climate Action Committee.
Yeah.
And with all the coordination that's happening in the county, it just hasn't been defined when say old buildings.
Right.
Is it going to be all residential, multifamily as well, some commercial? That just needs to be more further refined.
Sure. I'd say yes, but our two, so so now talking instead of new construction about remodels, and I understand that that can sometimes be a much fuzzier question. Is, do you anticipate that that might be included in this fall's ordinance or is, would that come later as a separate ordinance?
I think that will come later because it's going to need more strategic coordination between so many industries, including PGE funding sources. Right?
Right.
So incentivizing is we, what we don't want to have is disincentivizing people to go electric. For example, if we say, yeah, all new or replacement, say a new water heater. You can't replace it with gas, it has to be electric. There is a big concern that if we do that across the county or just in one jurisdiction, people are going to not be incentivized to come get a permit. We want to make sure the funding is in place for all regions as far as the state level, local level, and that we have a clear forms and processes across the county, not just, I have to do this in Mill Valley, do this in Fairfax, go to San Rafael, it's different. We want it to be nice and uniform. So the contractors, homeowners, developers are aware, this is the plan by the county and it's clear and.
Got it. Thank you. All right. Well, I would urge we put the pedal to the metal, but I I definitely understand the need to move together. So thank you.
Go ahead, Charles.
Well, I think our response to the overall grand jury report is fine. I think I have questions about resilience and other kind of effects that this might have on communities. And even though I definitely, you know, like to save the environment, do the right thing. Sometimes, you know, I mean, we really don't know what's generating the energy source that's energizing a cooktop. It could be a gas fired plant or a nuclear plant or any other method of energy production. So why is electrification ultimately the goal? The other thing is the California infrastructure and PG&E is not for me, a solid deliverer of electricity. So during the shut offs, I was still able to cook because I had a gas cooktop and I was still able to have my kids take a warm shower because I had gas. And that is a choice that I make and it is my choice as a private entity, as long as the PG&E chooses to deliver that energy source because it's available. We also have energy. You know, basically, we're not in super abundance of energy and energy sources, right? So currently naturally liquefied gas is still a very available and affordable method. So I actually feel that electrification will be a more costly, especially implemented across the board with everyone. That there might be real effects. What I do like about your response and your overall attitude is if we collectively do it and solve all those stop gaps that could could hamper the program, I'm okay with it. But we as individuals or individual municipalities are not going to solve that. And I personally don't believe that it's best for all the people in the community at this time to be forced to upgrade with a kitchen permit. Now, if we're talking about.
I'm sorry, we're in questions.
Right. Well, but so so I just want to know, like, ultimately, are you, you see the whole thing for the entire permitting process? Is that? And so why is that? I guess basically, why do, why do you see that individuals that have had a house and have the delivery system already installed under the ground and and that's what's supported up into a certain point like, you know, I don't hear the broader discussions about the 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 resource. I just hear, and it's not like Energy Star or anything. You're just talking about shutting it off and not allowing it. Right? The other thing is, is have you considered commercial? So is there a commercially available cooking you that's all electrified that can basically meet the demand of a commercial enterprise? You know, if we have a barbecue grill that basically is gas fired, right? And you have banned the ability to allow them to cook with gas. Have you ever eaten barbecue that was electrified? So, you know, I I guess I just, I I appreciate it. I think it's the right thing to do. I think ultimately we're looking at, you know, the environmental damage that's being wrought by petrol fuel is at the same level as like chlorofour carbons. And ultimately, we said, you can't use that hairspray anymore, right? You can't use that in your refrigerator. But those were very specific industries and they had alternative beans that were just as available and equal in effectiveness. And I'm still not totally and did the grand jury report really give you confidence that there are those means? Or are they just basically saying we have no choice? You want to just kind of have a broad broader spitball?
I can summarize that. So that is what's beautiful about the McCab's response, the building officials, the more and more we spoke about them heard very similar things. And so the answer from the building officials was adopt or implement number three, recommendation three. And summarize the last part of recommendation three, the plan should identify those strategies, programs and concrete actions necessary to bring about equitable prompt and material acceleration of building electrification electrification throughout the county. And it is taking into account the whole picture. Having conversations with PG. Having conversations with PGE, so the suppliers, the suppliers, the utilities, the companies that, um, uh, produce the appliances even, uh, you know, having that clearly identified with our plan as well as all the rebates and things like that. So getting, um, just like with this housing element, getting all the stakeholders involved in the conversation. Say what implement, what implications are going to be happening if we do this and if we do that? So come up with a true strategic plan. That's number three. And then recommendation two for existing and one will come easily once three has been truly, um, fully vetted, put it that way. And as far as the R2, so that'll address that.
Chris, I'm sorry, I'm just going to cut you off for one minute. Um, because we're at nine thirty, I'm just going to make a motion that we extend our meeting. Then we do it up to half an hour, up to, to ten o'clock.
Uh, you can extend this by a affirmative vote of a majority of the council members present beyond ten o'clock. It's the affirmative vote of all council members.
Okay. Hopefully you get through this by ten o'clock. I just want, I just want a safety cushion in place.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. We have a second. Um, I'll open up if there's any public comment. One thing to note, there's nobody from the public left in person. Uh, don't see any hands raised. I assume there's no email comments.
No, we do not have any emails.
Thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and close public comment and, um, go ahead and call for the, uh, for the vote. Thanks.
Council member Beckman?
Yes.
Council member Mongan?
Yes.
Council member Ravazio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Casissa?
Yes. And I don't know if this is an omen. This is the first meeting that we've run over in a while and it's Todd's last meeting. So we're pinned on him. I'm putting it on Todd.
That's my fault.
Even though we think about we got through Caltrans and housing element. I'm sorry, Chris, go ahead.
Actually though.
Okay. I'm sorry. We do have one hand raised, but let me go ahead and hit, Chris, you're going to answer, um.
No, I, 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 I'm, I, I accept the answer about my concerns and maybe the concerns of some of our constituents. And basically, you know, it's just an answer right now and we're going to work through it. So.
There's a lot of existing conditions related to current housing stock, including things like, uh, a barbecue, guest barbecue. There may be exceptions to that. Number jurisdictions already have that in place. It's the continually operating units that are most important on the, on the residential side as far as water heaters and furnaces.
Yeah. And then, but so, I mean, this is where it could get really detailed and I guess it's not the time to do that. But with water heaters, basically the on-demand, when you have a small house with a lot of people that they cannot keep up with the, the demand use that you might have with larger density and that type of thing at this time. And so I just haven't seen the technology deliver the same quality of life. And that's part of the mandate is basically you need to give equitable and equal basically replacement value. And I, I, you gotta prove it to me and I gotta see it. And, and, you know, a manufacturer spec ultimately, I, I don't always believe, but.
No, that's why it's got to be a holistic view. It does. In- including like said battery backup.
Yeah.
And, um.
I, I just have a suggestion because it sounds like we're getting really into the weeds on this. Um, so, and we're supposed to be in questions right now.
Sorry.
And it just seems like we're going off on tangents. I was just, maybe you have an offline conversation with Chris. Cause again, I just think it's way more detailed.
I think it's important for me because ultimately I do want to prove it. But if I don't basically have a dialogue with him and understand truly where we're heading with this, I'm afraid it would move too for, fast and forward without me feeling confident to approve it. So I think in the dialogue, I've gotten to that point and I'm fine with stopping, but ultimately I needed to do that process.
Okay, thanks. Are there any other questions from town council members? Okay, with that, I'm going to go ahead and open up to publicly, it looks like Roy, um, has a comment. He raised his hand. I can't tell if it was because we extended the meeting or because of, um, the grand jury report. So we're going to find out in a minute. Thank you. Go ahead, Roy.
Yeah. Hi. Good evening again. Uh, grand jury report. I, you know, I, I appreciate the fact that, uh, we would like to maybe electrify. Uh, I'd like to know from Chris and the council members, are you familiar with what's happened in Europe with the COP twenty-six last year? And saying we're going to go all renewables. UK went, uh, they were going to go complete or try to go as much wind power as they possibly could. And guess what? The wind didn't blow very much. Germany started winding down their nuclear after Fukushima. They closed down seven of their plants and I brought up the issue about nuclear and they're saying, no, no, no nuclear. You gotta have base loading. It's probably going to cost somewhere in the area of two to four trillion dollars to get the grid up to speed to fully electrify everything. I've looked into electrifying everything in my house, quarter million dollars. I'm sure Chris and Eli would be willing to split that with me. Uh, you, you know, this whole thing about electrifying is virtue signaling. We've got to get realistic. Take a look at what's happening in Europe. Germany doesn't know what they're going to do this winter. They've been cut off from natural gas. They are starting to fire up their coal plants. So when we move ahead too quickly and don't really look at the consequences and get the infrastructure in place that works properly. And Charles, thank you for your comments. You are spot on. And there's a lot more to talk about this. So just to say, hey, we're going to, uh, you know, electrify and maybe get all of the existing, uh, property owners to eliminate gas. What do you have to do? You gotta get the, the heater, the stove, the water heater, uh, you gotta get batteries. You gotta probably redo the wiring in your house. You got solar panels. And also to go electrifying, we're going to be supporting Communist China. They control seventy, eighty, ninety percent of all of the solar panels we're getting. You know, what about batteries and lithium? Lithium to produce it and mine it needs huge amounts of water. What do we have very little of right now? And we don't know how soon the drought's going off. We don't, uh, on, there's only one mine in all of the United States. It is in Nevada that does lithium mining. So all this stuff to electrify is not looking at reality. So go ahead, start looking at reality before you come up with these ideas that we're going to, everybody's going to electrify. Uh, I'm finished for right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Roy. And we have one other hand raised, which is Pat, if you can bring her over, please.
Hi there. This is Pat Ravazio, four two seven Oakdale. I just want to commend both the grand jury and the council members who are understanding the importance of switching to electrification. We need to recognize that clean, natural gas was never clean and was never natural. That it is fracking, that is creating the huge releases of methane that are twenty times more heating and more dangerous for our environment than even carbon. And also the point of electrification is that as solar and wind are increased, we will be able to gain more and more of our power cleanly through electrification. And gas will never be clean. It cannot be clean. So yes, there are some difficulties and yes, there are some prices to the environment of the alternatives. But with this big bill that's just been passed by Congress to help electrify our nation, there, there is going to be support. So please, let's not join the retrograde people who want to go back. We all know that houses that do not have natural gas have much lower incidences of children having asthma and older people having lung issues. So we were sold a bill of goods with natural gas that we needed to burn fossil fuels right in our kitchen in order to cook. It was a crock. We fell for it. And it's time to get us back on track to clean natural energy in our homes. Fracking was always a really bad idea. So thanks for hanging in there. It's not an easy job. But just keep pushing forward and we'll all get there together. Thanks very much for your time.
Thanks, Pat. And I don't see any other hands raised, uh, any emails come in?
No, we didn't get any emails.
Thanks. With that, I'll go ahead and close public comment. And I, we need a motion on this, Amy, to approve the, uh, response. Thanks. Uh, so with that, I'll bring it back to council. We're looking for a motion to approve the, um, draft response to Marin County Grand Jury regarding electrifying Marin's buildings.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Quickly, go ahead.
Yes, there are some typos that I'm going to change within there, uh, just to clarify. And if, uh, the, um, questioners would, uh, making public comment would read through the report, it is quite comprehensive and talks about the equity, the deep dive on specific subjects to really have a wise approach to this thing. So just wanted to make that comment.
Okay, thanks. So we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? So the only thing is if it could just be amended and fix the typos, I'll throw that out there also. Um, and with that, I'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Council member Beckman?
Aye.
Council member Mongan?
Yes.
Council member Ravazio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Casissa?
Yes. And with that, we'll go move to six C, which is a consideration, possible adoption of resolution number forty-seven slash two oh twenty-two to create a new position titled Climate Action and Adaptation Coordinator. Pretty good. I usually have a hard time with that word. And with that, I'll turn it over to Adam. I think this is our second reading, correct?
Yeah, so I'll make this very short. This is the second reading, just an update. I know we, the request was made to try to get this out as soon as possible. We, I, um, we were able to post this today, so it was out, uh, and posted. Um, and we'll be doing advertising and we've started to set a, um, oral board hearing date, uh, not hearing date, interview date. And, uh, looking forward to seeing the new positions, uh, or the applicants. Um, and I think there will be many, so.
Thanks. Any questions from council members? No, uh, go ahead and open for public comment. Again, there's nobody here in person from the public. I don't see any hands raised, any email comments?
No email, public comment.
Thanks. And I will go ahead and bring back to council. We're looking for a motion to approve resolution number forty-seven slash two oh twenty-two to create the new position.
So moved.
Thanks. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Uh, any further discussion? Go ahead and call for the vote.
Council member Beckman?
Yes.
Council member Mongan?
Yes.
Council member Ravazio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Casissa?
Uh, yes. And with that, we're going to move to council report, town manager's report.
Do I start? Is it, oh, it is me. I'm sorry.
Okay. It's, it's you. It's not the other him.
No, I, I didn't know the order of things. All right.
Too fast.
You're going quick. This is good. Um, I'll make this brief as well, but I think the major thing I wanted just to talk about, um, was some of our transition plan and, and just give an update to the council to make sure you're aware of how we're handling things internally. Um, what, actually everyone around here is, is part of that plan. So Chris, um, uh, is, is uh, stepping up and taking on some additional responsibilities, um, as part of the, um, with the building team and sort of more interdepartmental work. Um, so I'm pleased with that and thank you, Chris, for um, uh, supporting the transition in that way. Martha Battaglia, who you saw earlier, she is also, um, taking on additional responsibilities. She will be running some of the planning commission meetings going forward and some of the planning staff meetings going forward as well. Um, and then to my left, you'll, you've noticed that, uh, um, Lorena has taken over and is going to be working on town clerk duties and responsibilities. This is actually a plan that I think was hatched in, in Todd's brain earlier, along with Lorena and Rebecca. So this is putting that in motion, really just excited to see Lorena, um, get some more experience and, uh, get to work, uh, with all of you in a more close capacity. Um, and then with that, Rebecca and I get to work on, uh, more town manager responsibilities and, uh, looking, really looking forward to working with Rebecca. And as we sort of create um, and collaborate on the, on the responsibilities and roles that we're going to share, um, as part of, uh, the town manager duties. Um, we'll, we'll report back, but for the meantime, um, actually I shouldn't say for the meantime. Um, as one of the things as a starting point, she's going to be working closely with Ashley in the Parks and Rec, uh, department as, and some of that work there as well. So. I don't know if anybody else wanted to, Todd, do you want to share anything on that? No, you got it. I got that covered. All right.
He, he, he's out of it. Any questions of Adam? Okay. With that, we'll bring back to, uh, council for town council reports, uh, Eli.
Um, the only thing I'll report on had a police council meeting and a fire council meeting. I just want to commend the central and police department, uh, police authority. They have just purchased two electric, uh, vehicles for their cadets, which I think is really great. It's, it's like, you know, always inspiring to see local agencies really walk the walk um, on EVs. So that's fantastic. Hats off.
Thanks, um, Bob. Thanks, um, Lea.
Nothing to report.
Charles? Thanks. Uh, and that's on me. And I attended the same meetings, police and fire council meetings, um, that I, Eli did, and that's all I have to report. And with that, we have the drafted Jennifer upcoming meeting, which is September sixth. And if there's no further business to come before the town council, I will go ahead and adjourn our meeting. And we do have an SD two meeting. Um, with that, can we take a roll call of board members, please? Thanks, Chris.
Board member Beckman?
Here.
Board member Mongan?
Here.
Board member Ravazio?
Here.
Vice President Lee?
Here.
And, uh, President Casissa?
I hear, oh, that sounds really good. I like that president Casissa. Thank you. Uh, okay. Open up for public comment. This gives anybody, uh, from a public opportunity to speak on anything that is not on the agenda. And at this time, I do not see any hands raised, any email comments?
No emailed comments.
Thank you. With that, I will go ahead and close public comment. We do not have any presentations tonight. Move to the consent calendar. Uh, these are items which are in the normal course of business. They've been previously discussed. They can be approved by a single motion. Any member of the district board staff or the public can request that an item be removed for discussion. Is there anybody from the board or staff or public that wish to have an item removed? I don't see any hands raised in either three categories. So I'll bring it back to the board for a motion to approve consent items for A through four C. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, go ahead and call for the vote.
Board member Beckman?
Yes.
Board member Mongan?
Yes.
Board member Ravazio?
Yes.
Vice President Lee?
Yes.
President Casissa?
Uh, yes, we have no public hearings. There's no business items. I assume there's not a district manager's report because he's not here. Thank you. Cal, Caltrans OD'd him. Um, and there's, are there any board member reports? Okay, with that, um, then we will have a draft agenda for our next meeting. We're going to move into a closed session. Before that, I will go ahead and open for public comment. And again, this is, um, closed, um, this is public comment regarding our closed session, which has to do with, uh, public employee performance evaluation. I do not see any hands raised, any email comment?
No emails.
Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and close public comment and we are adjourning for a closed session, which means we'll be back to potentially report out of our closed session. Thanks. And I have nothing to report out of our closed door session. And with that, there's no. Let me go ahead and repeat that. I apologize. I didn't realize the mic was off. Uh, I'm going to call the meeting back into, um, session, Santeri District Two. Board meeting. Um, with that, I have nothing to report out of our closed door session. And if there's no further business to come before the board, I will go ahead and, uh, adjourn the, uh, Santeri District Two Board meeting. Thank you, everybody.